We'll wait, we'll pause for a moment. We're on the air. Are we all set? Ready, Lisa?
I'm ready.
Okay. We'd like to welcome you to the Lunenburg Zoning Board of Appeals. What we'd like to do is tell you how we run the show here. What we do is Lisa will read the petition. Then you can speak to the petition if you want, or you can just let it stand on its own merits. If you do, you have to come up front and talk on the mic. It's the way we have to do it now that we're, it could be a moment of fame on television. So there. So with that, the hearing is from John A. and Janice Boyle of 5 Crocker Avenue. And what they are looking for is a dimensional variation so that they can put a deck on, appendage to their house. I believe that's correct. And with that, Lisa, would you please?
Okay, this is an application for a special permit for dimensional variation. Massachusetts General Law's Chapter 48, Section 9, Zoning Board of Appeals. The name and address of the applicant is John A. and Jane S. Boyle of 5 Crocker Avenue in Lunenburg. The undersigned hereby appeals as follows: A special permit for dimensional variation of seven feet to construct a deck in the rear of the property. The proposed action has not begun. The basis for this application for special permit is found in the following section of the Lunenburg zoning bylaw, Section 8321B2. Street address of the property is 5 Crocker Avenue in Lunenburg. Assessors map 112, parcel 8. The name and address of each holder of legal title to the land which is the subject of this case is John A. and Jane S. Boyle of 5 Crocker Avenue in Lunenburg. Recorded in Worcester Northern District Registry of Deeds Book 1204, page 172, recorded June 23, 1978. On page 3, Section 12, they've answered the questions to the following: A will not be injurious or dangerous to the public health or unduly hazardous because of traffic congestion, danger of fire or explosion, or other reasons. They replied, no. B will not have a material adverse effect on the value of land and buildings in the neighborhood or on the amenities of the neighborhood. B, no, will add value to the property. C will be regarded, operated with reasonable regard for order, sightliness, if in open use. It is not an open use. D will not produce noise, vibration, smoke, dust, odor, heat, or glare observable at the lot lines and amounts clearly detrimental to the normal use of adjacent property.
Excuse me. Porches not in open use? Just curious, that's just, just a comment. Go ahead.
And they replied, no. And it's dated May 28, 2014, by Jane S. and John Boyle of 5 Crocker Avenue. Attached is a list of abutters from the town of Lunenburg and abutters list from the city of Lemmonster because the property is 300 feet in both towns. And there's a plan showing the deck in relationship to the house. And there's a site plan dated May 21, prepared by James E. Gaffney, professional engineer. I also received a memo from the Lunenburg Board of Health, June 16, saying they have no issues because the property is connected to Lemmonster Water and Sewer. That's all, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, thank you very much.
You're welcome.
With that, is the petitioner would like to talk about what he would like to do, or leave it to the board to act on what's on the paper? If you'd like to speak to it, come up to the mic.
Okay. I'm John Boyle, and my wife Jane is back there. We're petitioning to add a deck to the back of our house and the, apparently, we don't have enough frontage or backage, whatever it is. So that's why we need the variance.
We'll stop using that. Hmm? That's a new term, and we'll stop using that.
Yeah, okay. I'm here with my contractor, Dick Paquette, my neighbor Brad Kennedy, who would be the one closest to the deck, and also our neighbor Marie Alfredson. Hopefully, they'll speak on our behalf, but it's just a deck on our house and, and we don't have the normal depth to the line, and we're asking for a variance.
Okay.
Yep.
Thank you.
Okay.
Anybody else would like to speak on behalf of the applicant? Come forward and express your thoughts. You've got to give your name and address, please.
My name's Brad Kennedy. I'm at 17 Crocker Ave. And my property is right on the line where the deck is going to go. And it was sort of my idea that the deck be at least 12 feet because I have a deck that's only 10 feet, and 12 feet's a much better choice. It doesn't impact any view from my house. The way my house is set up, the, you probably can't see the deck from any of the places in my house. So I'm here to support it because I think it adds a lot to the, to John's house, and I think it, you know, adds, makes all the properties around me look better.
It'd be a better place to have your parties since it's wide a deck.
Well, I figure if he's partying, I can go over easily. We have a little hole between the stone walls between the houses, and I can wander over.
Thank you. Anybody else like to speak? If not, we'll, we'll turn around and open it up to public discussion for anybody here that would be in favor and would like to speak again on behalf of the petitioner. If I hear none, I would then ask if there's anybody here that's in opposition to what the petitioner would like to do. And hear none, I'll cut off public discussion. We formally have to do that. Can't miss on any of these steps. So with that, we cut it off, public discussion, and turn it over to the board. General people.
I have one, one question, Mr. Chairman. I saw on the Gaffney's plan that he indicates that the setback is a minimum of 15 feet, and I believe that's the correct number, right? And yet, it, it shows on the plan that this is 13.3 feet setback from the rear lot line. And the text indicated he's looking for a dimensional variation of seven feet, but by my calculation, it's only 1.7 feet.
Okay, so we're going to have to, petition's going to have to withdraw the, the description of the back, assuming it's a 20-foot rear, and they're suggesting that it's a side yard.
It's, no, it's a rear yard setback that he says the minimum is 15 foot on this plan. Is that correct?
No, the rear, rear setback would be 20 feet. Side yard, side yard 15, that's a rear yard for 20, front yard.
And this is incorrect. Proposed rear yard.
Yeah.
So Gaffney's drawing is...
That needs to be amended to reflect the facts of the case. You agree?
I took it that that was accurate, but it's not, is what you're saying, right? So the rear, I haven't checked that with the bylaw. You will?
It is. It's 20.
It's 20.
20, yeah.
Okay. So we'll let it ride for the moment, but do take note of the, that the engineer drawing is incorrect. Is that fair?
Right.
Okay.
Yep.
Any other further questions from the board? I don't hear any.
This is just going to be an open deck. It's not going to be screened in.
Right, that's an open deck.
And that was just a mistake by Mr. Gaffney. He thought that it was 15-foot setback that we needed, but it's actually 20.
It's 20.
So we at least, maybe we have identified the inaccuracies of the engineers. Engineers are not supposed to make mistakes like that.
I know.
Yeah. Get your money back.
No. What makes that?
All right. Okay. If there are no other further questions, the chair will accept a motion.
287.
Six foot.
I'll make a motion that we accept, or we grant the variation.
Okay. Second to the motion?
I think that what we mean to say is we grant a special permit for dimensional variations.
Yeah. You're going to, you're going to reformat your motion?
Yes.
Special permit?
Special permit for the dimensional variation of seven feet.
For the rear yard setback.
Yes.
Okay. Second to the motion?
Second.
Further discussion? There's no further discussion. All those in favor of granting the special permit as requested, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? I hear none. With that, now we have to do some reading. I've said over and over again, by this time, after so many years, I should be able to say this automatic. On the other hand, I really should record it once and hit the button, but I'll get into the reading. "The special permit is granted, in granting the special permit, the Board of Appeals shall ensure that the proposed use would not be injurious, dangerous to the public health, or unduly hazardous because of traffic congestion, danger of fire, explosion, or other reasons. Would not have a material adverse effect on the value of the land. The buildings in the neighborhood are in the amenities thereof." And then we hit the one that we, you said that didn't apply, but that's okay. "In the construction, there will be reasonable regard for order and sightliness, if in open use," and the others don't apply. "The special authorization is granted with the contingency that the petitioner comply with all licenses, regulations, statutes, and ordinance of any and all applicable state, local, and federal boards or agencies with jurisdictions over the premises." I think that covers us if we missed anything, because we sure did cover everything else there. "The granting of the special permit shall annul to the benefit of the applicant. The special permit is subject to periodic review by the permit-granting authority," that's the zoning board, "or the enforcing officer to ensure compliance with any enumerated conditions." And there were no other conditions in the permits, so the rest we can leave. And the, the next thing you should need to know is that it takes 14 days for us to get the special permit stamped by the town clerk. And then you'll certainly receive it. But you should be advised that any decision of this board can be appealed to the Superior Court. And that's within, they have a period within 20 days of the day it's stamped. So you should be aware of that, in case you start, jump the gun, and you think you might have missed a good friendly neighbor. So with that, and then the last thing that you need to do is record the special permit with the registry of deeds. And with that, we wish you well. Thank you.
Enjoy your deck.
That was an easy one.
You want to go on hold until 7? You want to go off the air until 7?
Yeah, we can go off, I think we should recess the hearing.
John, can we adjourn? Till 7 o'clock?
Okay. Now, show me what you...
Such great music from Antonio Vivaldi, who wrote just an unfathomable amount of music. Some of his sacred music is some of his most stunning music. That's the opening Gloria from his Gloria in D. And you heard the Choir of Kings College Cambridge singing Vivaldi, and that's from a brand-new recording there, accompanied there by the Academy of Ancient Music. What could be better? Stephen Kleebury in charge. It's part of a big set of great CDs that we'd like to send you for your pledge of support here at 995 WCRB.
Every great work takes a great amount of, well, work. And keeping classical music on the radio takes a lot of work, too. So right now, other WCRB supporters have banded together to make things a little easier on you. Right now, your gift in any amount will be matched dollar for dollar. This match is only for a limited time, so strike while the iron is hot. Call 888-995-9272, or take part in this dollar-for-dollar match online at classicalwcrb.org.
That's right. What a great way to stay excited in the evenings, to have that sense of inspiration at night. Maybe you use WCRB for that every single night. If you do, then you really ought to join us as a real part of the family. 888-995-WCRB. Amanda Goodwin is here with me.
And so excited to be, because this is it. We are running up against the last 17 minutes of on-air fundraising for the day. We set out with a very ambitious goal at the start of the program, to hear from 100 people. We are down to needing just 27 more people to get involved, you and 26 others. That's what will make this day a great success. And when you get involved in the next 17 minutes, Gloria and Bud Rose, those are other passionate supporters of this music just like you. They're also members of our Ralph Lowell Society, our major donor group here at WCRB. They will match your gift in any amount, dollar for dollar. Thanks so much to David in Somerville for getting in on that dollar-for-dollar match, Paul in South Hamilton, Peter in Rockland, Robert in Manchester, Jamie in Cambridge. They all had their gift matched when they gave online at classicalwcrb.org. And you can too, but you've got to do it now.
That's right. Time really is running out. And if you've heard the message, maybe you were sort of in a situation where you really couldn't just stop and make a phone call, but maybe you can now. It's almost quarter of 7:00, and if you're home and can just put things down for a second, it just takes about a minute, a minute and a half, to get that information over to us, and then really enjoy the feeling of knowing that your pledge of support is worth twice as much. I really suggest, if, if it's something that you could do for a pledge of...
$240.
Right. That's both this Choir of Kings College Cambridge five-CD set, which is just luminous, music of Rachmaninoff from The Vespers, The Vespers, I should say, also Vivaldi's Gloria, you heard a little bit of it, Dixie Dominus and Magnificat, and also coronation anthems by Handel, Ode for the Birthday of Queen Anne. It is magnificent, this recording, and the Miserere of Allegri. And then all of the Mozart piano concertos as well. We've sort of bundled these together, right?
We've made an exclusive set just for WCRB supporters. You'll get all 15 CDs for a gift of $240 right now, which of course, when you make it in the next 15 minutes, will be matched dollar for dollar for the last time today when we wrap up fundraising for the day at 7:00. So if you haven't done it yet, now's the best time to do it. Get in on the final match, get in on your final chance to make a difference today during this, our most important fundraiser. It is the end, the very end of the fiscal year. We are trying to shore up budgets for the music we all love so much. You could do your part right now with a gift in any amount. I got to tell you, we will be here tomorrow asking for your help. The match will not be, so make the most of it right now, as so many others have, and be one of the last 23 people now we need to hear from before we wrap things up at 7:00. 888-995-9272, or classicalwcrb.org. Again, just 23 more to go.
Just 23. Remember that phone number. It's toll-free, and it's also our, our call letters and our place on the dial, so it's easy to remember. 888-995-WCRB. Many thanks to Jim, who checked in from Nashua, New Hampshire, and Patricia in Brookline. Michael, thanks, in Haverhill, and Diane Marie in Rockland, Mass., Peter in Hawketon, Mass., and from Natick, Nathan, thank you so much. And Leonard just checked in from Framingham, Massachusetts. Thank you so much. Consider that big set of 15 CDs. It will be nourishment for your summer, that I promise you. We think that they are just gorgeous. Or $10, whatever is right, right? This is the time.
This is the time, because no matter what you do, whether it's that $100 a year, $1,500 a year, it will be matched dollar for dollar, but only in the next 50, actually less than 15 minutes. As we head back to music, please go to your phone, go online, do your part during this, one of the most important days of the most important fundraiser of the year for this great music. Just have moments to hear from you and get in on that dollar-for-dollar match. 888-995-9272, or online, classicalwcrb.org.
Well, we'll let the Handel and Haydn Society encourage you. This is Christopher Hogwood conducting the Third Concerto Grosso by Handel. Thank you so much for your support. The Concerto Grosso in G by Handel, number three, with the Handel and Haydn Society, Christopher Hogwood conducting, here at 995 WCRB. I'm Kathy Fuller, here with Amanda Goodwin.
In college, they had this ridiculous music appreciation class. I couldn't believe it. You got points for taking records home and listening to them. Hi, I'm Bee Blackburn, and I live in the Woburn area. And then I heard "Hello, mother, hello, father" in classical music, and I just, I, they had to carry me away. I was laughing so hard. I work at MIT. My official title is administrative mom. I work with graduate students. And the professors that I've worked with have been very tolerant of me and my radio. A few years ago, one of the students saw me with my radio on my desk and said, "Oh, how charmingly old-school." And from that day forward, I'd listen to it on the computer online. And now I have a little computer that I can get WCRB on anywhere, and I was playing it for the grandchildren this weekend. I've supported GBH as a struggling single mother because, you know, Sesame Street saved my life. I have one daughter, and now her children are growing up with Sesame Street. Classical music in the Boston area has, it's been the best place to hear classical music. The idea that classical music wasn't going to be available in Boston, very frightening.
I'm so grateful to Bee for telling that story. There are such great stories like that, and they really drive home this concept that this music really needs to be there in your life so that you can share it with all the other people in your life. I'm Kathy Fuller. Just three minutes left before we close down shop on this fun drive for tonight. I'm here with Amanda Goodwin.
And I'm hoping that you're going to your phone or going online and doing as Bee has done, and support this great music, support this great station with a gift in absolutely ... any amount. When you do it in the next three minutes, Gloria and Bud Rose, other passionate supporters, members of our major donor group, Ralph Lowell Society, they will match your gift dollar for dollar, but you've just got three minutes to get in on that. Have your gift in any amount, go twice as far. We set out with an ambitious goal to hear from 100 people before we closed up shop at 7:00. We've got 18 gifts to go. We can do it when you decide to be one of those last 18 that has their gift matched dollar for dollar. The number, 888-995-9272. The website to have your gift matched for the last time, classicalwcrb.org.
I love the way Bea thought so quickly when she realized she was old-school, and quickly switched over to computer. And we're glad to be able to offer that service as well. You know, many, many people listen to us online, and thank you very much for making your pledge of support online and leaving a comment if you have some time to do that. That is so key. Every pledge of support online or on the phone is doubled right now, just for the next couple of minutes.
Just for two more minutes, your gift in any amount will go twice as far when you give now. Please don't let the amount of the gift get in the way of making the gift. In just the past few minutes, we've had gifts ranging from $1,000 a year to $100 a year to $10 a month. Whatever you can do, please do it now, and do it with a call to 888-995-9272, or online classicalwcrb.org. Again, we are now down to needing just 12 more gifts to make our goal.
That's right, and here's what Amanda just said. She said, "Don't let the amount of your gift get in the way of making that gift." And that's really key. Thanks to Nicholas, who has just checked in from Chelmsford. Thank you so much. And Stephen in Acton, thank you. William in Quincy has checked in, and also in the beautiful town of Sherburne, thank you very much to Ms. Daryl. And thanks to also Kenneth in Dover, New Hampshire, 888-995-9272.
Will you be one of the last 12 people that make sure that we reach our goal on this the first day of our end-of-fiscal-year fundraiser? And be one of the last 12 people to have your gift matched dollar for dollar by other passionate supporters, Gloria and Bud Rose. Need to hear from you now, though, just 12 gifts away from making our goal. That phone number, 888-995-9272, or online classicalwcrb.org.
Remember, also, we've got that baton that's available to you. And let me tell you something, when you make that pledge of support in the next minute or so, and then when at 7:30, Christoph von Doc Nany lifts his baton with the Cleveland Orchestra, and you hear "Daphnis and Chloe" by Maurice Ravel, you will know that you've done a good thing. Trust me there.
Yeah, okay, that's good. Okay, we can reopen the meeting, and the first order of business, Misha, you have some order of business?
Yep.
Okay. What is it? You gonna read it?
Yes, she's gonna read it. I have a request from Peggy and Sherman Bull of 54 Gilchrist Road in Townsend, and they received a special permit for a tear-down and rebuild on 178 Peninsula Drive. I received this memo June 5th. Dear members of the board, we hereby request an extension to the special permit for 178 Peninsula Road, set to expire July 2015 to July 2017. Thank you for your consideration. It's signed Sherman M. and Peggy R. Bull.
Okay, thank you. The chair would like to open up to the board to discuss the matter.
It doesn't expire for another year, Lisa?
Right, but they don't know that they will build within one year.
Any comments? We could do it administratively if there's no comments to it. The chair would accept a motion to that regard.
I'll make a motion that would grant the extension to July of 2017.
Yes.
Second to the motion?
Second.
Okay. Any further discussion? There's no further discussion, all those in favor of granting the extension of the special permit for a tear-down?
Aye.
Say aye.
Aye.
An aye, and with that...
I'll send him a letter.
Done.
Thank you.
Okay, it is 7:00, or it's two minutes past 7:00, and this is a resumption of... By the way, I'm gonna ask a question. We changed the name of the project officially to Waylum Luxury Apartments. I see that's floating in there. So where, this is a continuation of the application for 42B, for the, which is now known as the Waylum Luxury Apartments. And you did that to accommodate some conflict of names that would have existed if it maintained its original name?
Yes.
That's the basis, okay. So, well, that's good. With that, we start off by, of course, I'll open the meeting, we've got that far. With that, we want an update on the project from the applicant. If you've got anything that you'd like to come forward and discuss, we're going to, beyond that, we're gonna do peer review, and then we're gonna pass through the... I'm pausing while they get together. Welcome.
Thank you.
Okay. And I'm just wrapping up, that the rest of the business will be to review all of the inputs from the various departments, and then have public discussion. So go ahead. Sure, sure.
Yes, that's Gary Lorden from Benjamin Builders, representing Waylum Luxury Apartments. And just to give an update, I think where we are, everything seemed to be moving along fairly well. We've run into a little bit of a hitch on sewer and the fees in which Lunenburg charges, and we found, we have found, obviously, that the fees that would be required from the sewer department for fees for connection, the privilege fees, the connection fees, and the flow rate fees that they'd like to, that they'd like to charge that exist currently, would come up with a total number of, for the project, $1,618,0987 would be the total amount. And that number would make the, make the project unaffordable, and it equates to a cost of $13,491.55 per unit. And just for a quick comparison, Lunenburg discharges into Leominster and Fitchburg, and if I'm just, as a scenario, if I were to build this project in the city of Fitchburg, my total charge to the city of Fitchburg, if I built the project there, would be $121,000, which would correlate to $1,008 a unit. If we built the project in the city of Leominster, it would equate to a number that was $169,500, which would be $1,412 per unit. So we go from $1,008 per unit, $1,412 per unit, to $13,491.55. And I'm not, I'm not throwing stones at the sewer department or anything, I don't wanna do that, and I don't wanna fight with anybody. It's just that, again, I've run into a situation where the sewer fees make the project unaffordable again. So, and it's, it's certainly unfair, because I haven't had a lengthy discussion with the sewer department, so, and I think it would be fair to the sewer department if I could sit down with them at a meeting, have this discussion with them, and then talk about sewer again at the next meeting. I know we're looking to hopefully close, but I think we can do a lot of house cleaning on all other items, as far as waivers and things of that nature. And to be fair to the sewer department, and operate in good faith, I think it would be good if I would sit down with them, have an open discussion with them, show them where things are problematic, and make some suggestions as to where I think the fees would be fair. And when I say that, I'm looking at something that is, that is a higher number than, than what we had talked about, Leominster-Fitchburg, but yet a number that I think that is fair and they could possibly live with. So I think I, I think I should have that discussion with them, and then come back and talk more about sewer, and possibly just table it for the rest of this evening, and then attack aggressively the rest of the issues, for like the waiver list and some of the house cleaning on the engineering, and maybe have Fred and Wes do that.
I have only, I have only one, just one comment. That's a radical difference, though, there should be, obviously be a discussion, but there's, the smaller numbers that you have, does that include, and I could be wrong, I'm just reaching back away, that Leominster, and I don't know about Fitchburg, are under orders to upgrade their plants rather significantly with certain types of toxic waste and so forth that they can't handle now, and that that cost for that plant upgrade is, I understand, a fairly significant number. So, and the numbers that you put out now include the oncoming costs as related to the requirements. And if I'm correct, see, I could stand be corrected, but I would, but they're so radically different, I'm just looking to say, is there something else in the ointment that we don't see?
When I checked with them, I checked what they told me for fees in the city of Leominster was this, $1,000 per unit, and then they do $2 per gallon, and then, and that's their fee. And then when I talked to Fitchburg, I talked to the head of engineering, Gary Bevelacqua, and he said that they charged $2,000 for the first unit, then $1,000 for each additional unit, and it was $121,000 total.
Okay, so you wanna leave it sit right there, and...
I think so, if you don't mind, unless, unless the board would rather address it tonight.
I'd like to go to Dan Hill for a moment, if he wants to make a comment on the subject matter.
Sure. Mr. Chairman, in the decision that we rendered back in 2010, the applicant actually agreed to pay a sewer connection fee of $1,760 per unit for every single unit. So that was already agreed upon by, by the developer for the previous project that we approved. And then he also agreed to pay the sewer betterment fee for the, for 47 of the 48 market-rate units. This board waived the betterment fee for the affordable units. So I'm not sure what, if the developer's asking for something different than what was agreed, agreed upon last time, it's not clear to me what exactly he's requesting. So I think maybe what he should do is come back to us at the next meeting with a specific request of what he wants to see waived, because this is really a waiver request. So what is it that he wants waived? What does he wanna pay? And then the board can consider that request in light of the sewer commission's recommendations.
And, and if I hear you correct, what you're trying to do is, because of the large discrepancy, is to have the communications with the sewer department to see if there's a misunderstanding or whatever it is, that where they seek their own level that they must get, they can't be unprofitable, obviously.
Correct.
Some people would like to do, wipe anything, if you can get away with it. But anyway, but would you, you wanna get together, sit down, rationally, discuss the matter, and then at the next meeting, that can be on point, to see where...
Right, and then I thought, and just to share what I, the approach I'd like to take with the sewer department is to do something that, you know, pay the $1,760 connection fee on all the market-rate units, waive the affordable rate units, and then pay the privilege fee of $11,551 per each building, you know, the five buildings, which comes up to 200 and some change total. Or, much like with, with Waylum, Emerald Place, they had been charged, they, they had been charged a, the fee in their taxation early, what's the, what do they call the, the betterment fee? They'd been charged a betterment fee, and that was that they hung their hat on, and then they only paid $1,760 per unit. And on this case, this property was charged that same betterment fee earlier, $20,000 for the property. So I, either way you work it, if I paid just the $1760 on all the units, 120, or if I paid it on just the market-rate ones, and then did $11,551 privilege on each building, it still comes out to, one comes out to 211,000, one comes out to 216,000, so it's the same, same kind of multiplier, same kind of number. And then the fee comes out to, and I think it's over 1,600 per unit.
So, Mr. Chairman, that's, that's obviously a much, that's obviously a much greater waiver than what this board granted in 2010.
Say again?
That's obviously a much greater waiver, in terms of degree of, of cost, that he's seeking today than he did in 2010. So you're gonna wanna have some backup for why that's necessary.
So we need an input back from sewer commission to see whether, see what that means to them and the impact on them.
Well, yeah, I mean, we've had conversations, I mean, Dick's talked to them, I think, I think we can safely predict that they're not gonna go along with that kind of request.
Does there need to be any further dialogue? If you're gonna have dialogue with the sewer commission, does Dick need to be involved in that activity, so that this board can understand the, whatever is coming down is a settlement, a settled number, if there is to be one?
I think, I think it would make sense.
So, so between now and then, you two can get along and come together, so I can get feedback from the board as to...
I'll contact the sewer department and try to get on their agenda, as soon as we can.
Yeah, okay, it makes sense. We've been unfortunate, because we've, we've had, Carl Luck has been attending all the meetings, but I think he's vacationing or something, so we'll get there. Okay, any further questions in that matter? We all set? Okay. All right.
Okay, thank you.
That takes care of that. Now, from your standpoint on the project, do we have any more project updates from your point of view, from, from your engineering department? If not, we will ask our, our person to get up and straighten this out. Pardon, who's coming up?
Before defer to Fred.
Good evening, Fred Hamway from Hamway Engineering.
Thank you, Fred.
How would, since this is first time, my first time in front of the board, our peer review, would you like me to go through item by item on my list?
Would you feel is necessary to appraise the board?
How, whatever I feel?
Whatever you think is necessary.
Okay, fine, I'll do that, and then if we have questions. Does everyone have a copy of two reports? I sent two letter reports dated June 18th and June...
Yeah, I have the, I have it right here. June...
I have June 18th.
June 20th is very minimal, and I can just describe that if you don't have it.
Okay, please do.
So if you'd like to, I'll just explain...
Well, go ahead.
Overall, what I have here, and then if we want to talk about different items.
The members read it, all you have to do is tickle their imagination, so they don't have to have a visual picture.
Okay. What I did, of course, was review the plans, the traffic impact report, and study the drainage calculations, and the list of waivers. And as far as the plans, I'll talk about that first. For the most part, I have, in the order of six, nine, 10, 11, 14 items, 14 comments on that. And for the most part, it's a combination of being more descriptive or more detailed on the plans. For instance, one of them was showing the grading, and what they did on the grading plan, they did show all the contours and so forth, and I was just requesting that they have some spark grades at high points, low points around the buildings to complete the detailness of the grading. And a lot of the other ones were notes that might be conflicting with another detail, another plan, so I was looking for, to make sure everything was consistent from one plan, one detail to the other, and had the specifics on it. And for the most part, I do that because during construction, and sometimes boards ask me to go out and do inspections during construction, all the information is on the plan, and it's not a gray area, and we don't have to worry about it, get in a debate in the middle of the construction, and hold up construction, or have arguments, or disagreements out there. So I try to make, as best I can see, get the plans so they're ready for construction, even though in some instances, some boards don't require a final set of plans. So that's what these comments are, for the most part, is things I felt were missing or lacked, the detail, or were vague, and I wanted to get those cleared up, and so once again, it's consistent from one plan, one picture, to the next picture.
Okay.
None of it's not doable, or none of it is technically wrong, so it's from a technical standpoint, it's okay, but it should be clarified.
Are we communicating that to, to the applicant?
I'm sorry, I, before I wrote this, I did meet with Wes from Whitman Bing, and we went over all these on the plan, then I wrote up my list, and it does say on my letter that I have met with Wes and discussed these with him, so he's well aware of them.
Well, has he agreed with him?
Oh, yes, I'm sorry.
So, in other words, what we'd like to do is get on point, and I would juke him down and tell us what you've done, and then we eliminate, you know, bring them down, and see if he's in total agreement. He's in total agreement, we're probably happy campers here.
Right.
But if he doesn't, then we gotta get on point. It'd be just like with the sewer people, we get, we get a little disagreement, we gotta talk.
Sure.
So I'm sure he's prepared. No, I'm not sure, I hope he's prepared.
Yes, he is. Yes, we had discussed that, sorry.
Continue.
Okay, so the second part of my... Okay, so, um, the second part of my report, that was on the plans themselves, the second part, I talked about the drainage calculations, and, um, there's a number of ways to do drainage calculations. Uh, the way they did initially, I thought it wasn't completely reflective of what was happening, so I asked them to revise some of it, redo some of it, especially on what's called the pre-construction part. They were considering a whole watershed, in my opinion, when you, when you change a small section of a watershed, it doesn't really change the overall runoff. If you change, if you look at what you're changing compared to what it is today, then it's more of an, um, a real, uh, real delta, a real change. So he has done that. At the time I wrote this, he hadn't redone it. I have got those calculations, and he did redo them. Um, I agree with them, the revisions of them, and, um, what I've asked for is now, he gave me the revisions in that section that I want to revise, now I'd like him to give me the full packet that is complete from beginning to end, not pieces together, so we can have a final, um, booklet of the actual approved, accepted drainage calculations.
Okay.
Along those same lines, when they designed the piping system in a parking lot of any type or a roadway, what's called a rational method is used normally to do the drainage calculations, they did use a different method. He, Wes went back and did revise those drainage calculations to reflect the use of the rational method, and I, at the time of this letter, it hadn't been changed yet, since this letter, it's been changed, and I've reviewed it, and I just have one question for him, as he knows, and that's to, um, recheck some of the design velocities, but the piping size, slope, piping system is acceptable the way it was designed this second time. So for the most part, the drainage calculations, like the plans, are technically correct now, I just want a, a final, um, booklet, tabulation of it.
Okay.
Okay. The traffic study, the one I received, which I received, um, last meeting, was the two thousand, six, two thousand and six traffic study for the subdivision, so it really doesn't apply, there's, there's number of exits and entrance points, and now we only have the one, um, it's, it's, so it really doesn't apply. I did not review it anymore, it was accepted by the board back at that time.
You pared it down to what you believe it to be required because of the condensed aspect, in other words, uh, the technical aspect of it apply, in other words, it doesn't apply because you get too many entrances in the other, this way you're condensing it down, but the, from an engineering point of view, are there any problems that you see?
I did not review it, this, the two thousand and six one, it was already previously reviewed, but it doesn't apply to this, it got resubmitted, correct?
I mean...
You resubmitted it.
Yes, based, based on the fact that it's rental now, it's fewer, it was a three-bedroom home, it was, it was three-bedroom homes prior to at a hundred and twenty units, and when now we're at a hundred and twenty units, but we're also fewer bedroom count with ones and twos, and then the, the number of traffic flow versus home versus apartment is significantly less. So rather than go through the expense of doing it all again, uh, I called the guy, I said, "I can write a letter and, um, and just say that," basically the same type of stuff that I just said, and he says, "Uh, it's going to be thirty-five hundred dollars for the letter." So I was hoping not to do the thirty-five hundred dollar letter, um, and based off of the information that we've submitted to the board, in light that it's a, um, a diminished or lesser use, um, based off the hundred and twenty, that it would be acceptable to the board.
If that's, uh, makes our, uh, our, our, our guy comfortable, see, in other words, we're, we're leaning on our technical experts.
I understand, yes.
So if it makes them comfortable, and we come up with a summation of agreement, it would seem at least to present that to the board to see how they, they like it, not me, I'm, I'm...
I understand.
I'm the last guy to say anything, but, uh...
Mr. Chairman.
Know that, but I have a, I have a question, since we're on roads, yes?
It's okay, mate, I just had a comment on the traffic.
I just wanted to wrap around this. Uh, I have a notation here to myself of, uh, road thickness of two and a half inches, is that get into your domain of evaluation?
Yes, in the...
The next second.
Yes, in the waivers, and also, um, the, let me think now, the fire chief, um, spoke of that, and said Jack Rodic, Rodiquin should be speaking on that, and I, prior to that, I had written my letter and given my technical opinion on that, in the waiver section, which we will get into.
Yeah.
Haven't got into that yet, but when we go waive it to waive it, item to item, we'll take care of that section.
I got a little parking lot, and I went stronger than two and a half inches, and...
I believe it should be too, also.
Pardon?
I believe it should be thicker.
Uh, yeah, oh, yeah, and, uh, we'll just pass the rubber ball back to you guys as a concern.
Right, it's a, um, our, our position on that is that it's a, uh, it's on, it's a private drive, and your top is only as good as your base, and if we do a foot of gravel and four inches of crushed concrete rolled, and then you do the two and a half of paved, that's a very, very hard, uh, surface.
You got any potholes in Towson yet?
I don't have any, I don't even have a crack.
Oh, it's, it's a consideration, so we need you to look at it and come back to us and say, uh, what he just said is, uh, he thinks that he's building a superior road with only two and a half inches, so let us know your technical thoughts.
And again, obviously, it's a property that we're going to keep, and if I felt as though two and a half wasn't sufficient based off the base that we're putting in, I wouldn't do it, because I'll be redoing it and paying to redo it.
Okay. Dan, you want to do a comment?
Well, now I have comments on three things. On, on the road thickness issue, um, I think you received testimony from both Mr. Hamway and, uh, your DPW superintendent and your fire chief, saying that the waiver should not be granted.
Should not be granted.
Should not be granted.
Yeah.
Um, so I'm not sure if we have any, we can go back to them and ask them if, if their opinion would change based on what Mr. Lorden is saying about the subsoils, but I, that you already have that opinion, if he thinks that perhaps their advice did not consider what he just told you tonight, we, he can go back to them and, and see if that makes a difference in their opinion.
Mm-hmm.
With respect to the traffic report, um, I, I think the issue is not as simple as what Mr. Lorden is saying, it's not simply the traffic counts, the, the, the traffic study looks at the internal roadway network, to make sure that's safe, make sure that the curves are, are safe, making sure that there's adequate, uh, turning radii for trucks and, and emergency vehicles. Uh, it also considers the intersection of the project driveway and Waylem Road. If that intersection has changed at all from the previous plan, someone should review it to make sure that that intersection is still safe for site distances and, um, pedestrian safety. So I, that might be, that, that might be something that we could ask Mr. Hamway to do, and perhaps he's already done it. It, it may not require a whole new, full-blown traffic study, but I think those issues should be reviewed by somebody at least.
But you made the comment, uh, that the, uh, the detailed one for the larger project was no longer applicable, but condensed down, and, and, and what Dan said, have you embedded that thought process, uh, in terms of an evaluation of assuring this board that the, uh, that the roadways are in compliance with all of the aspects of you, you, you seem to have been satisfied that what existed, uh, seems reasonable.
No.
You, you don't think so?
I didn't say that, I didn't imply that if you took it that way.
Well, I just threw it out to see what your reaction was going to be.
Um, a couple of things, and, and I'm going to contradict what Gary's saying. My understanding on traffic, and I'm not a traffic engineer, it's based on units and not bedrooms, for starters, because you still have, uh, a couple that, parents that drive, and whether you have children that don't drive or drive, it's, it's, that's what it's going to be, it's not going to be, because you have five bedrooms, doesn't mean you have ten adults living there. You're going to have two adults and, uh, children that may, and they, may not be driving. So it is based, in my understanding, on units. Secondly, is on the original subdivision, you, and I don't, never saw the plans, but you're coming out to Waylem Street, F and L, right away, you come out to Piedmont, or Stewart?
Piedmont, yes.
Yep, is that one? Or two?
Three entrances, the F and L right away was Piedmont.
Okay, so just for the sake of argument, let's say the hundred and twenty units, forty went to each of those exits, I know that's not true. Now they're all coming, the hundred and twenty units are coming out to Waylem Street, so it's not the same comparison.
Mm-hmm.
Okay?
Okay.
I'm not saying forty went to each of those, I didn't say not, just...
Piedmont and that's divided.
It's, um, it is divided, they're on...
Let me, let me ask a question.
Hundred and twenty units going out to Waylem in the original design.
Let me ask a question, is there need for further review, or can we say that, uh, both you engineering guys are, are in harmony and agreement with what's going to be there? Uh, you're saying, no, there's, there needs to be something else investigated before you put your stamp for approval, or they approve?
They did not do the traffic study, being Whitman and Bing, so I want to assume they wouldn't be involved in that, it's another outside, another traffic firm.
If you're pressing, if you're pressing appropriately an issue to do further study, uh...
I think an updated, if, at the least, uh, uh, something addressing it, updating the traffic study, whether it's a letter that costs thirty-five hundred, I, I, that's between Gary and his traffic engineer, but, and it might and might not be enough either. I, they should be submitting it, it shouldn't be the review of the peer engineer determining what the effects of traffic is on the project, on the, on the town.
Mr. Chairman.
Go ahead.
Um, I, I think, I think the impacts are pretty, are capable of being measured pretty easily, uh, because every single car that comes in and out of this place is going in through Waylem Road now, right? So we, if we know what the counts are, we know they're all going into, through that one intersection. I think that somebody on behalf of this board could basically update the review that was done in 2010, without having the applicant necessarily hire another traffic engineer to provide a revised traffic report. I, I, I think the board could be satisfied if you had, I don't, who, did we have Gary Hebert review it in 2010? I mean, you could either go back to Gary and ask him to take a look at this revised plan, or maybe Mr. Hamway has a, a colleague who's a traffic engineer who could review it, uh, for short dollars. I, I don't think it's really that complicated, but it is different. It, like he said, you've got all the traffic going out one entrance, and you've got a roadway network that looks a lot different from the, from the old roadway network.
Yeah. So, so it would, uh, it would seem that the value of the traffic study done, and merging into the smaller, compact one, that you could glean enough good technical information that it, some, if I'm, listened to you correctly, a brief summary overview of merging some of the thought of the traffic study into...
And I, I guess I'd want to ask Fred, I mean, do you agree with what I'm saying? Is that something that sounds reasonable to you as a, as a peer review engineer?
I think what you're suggesting, and I didn't know who had reviewed it before, but it's best if that person reviews it, they already know all the information that's there, and they're updating their opinion, their review. So if you can get, obtain the services of that firm to look at it, that's probably the best. I, I don't, I'm not a traffic engineer, and two things, one is I have to go back twenty steps to go forward and go through that report to whatever extent, and if someone already has done that, there's not a reason to redo it.
So, so you're suggesting that a summary review of the modification by the person who conducted the traffic engineering report, who is, knows exactly what, what goes into making up the accurate report...
Mr. Chairman.
Could come out with a, a, to say, a, a review of it and, and rubber stamp it, that under the, the new conditions, uh, the, the elements of the, the road is, and the, and the turns and so forth are adequate, is that what you're suggesting?
Mr. Chairman, I think we, there's really two discrete issues here.
Say again?
I think there are two discrete issues here.
Well, good, straighten this out.
One, which is, you know, whether or not the trip generation presumptions that were made in that two thousand and six traffic study would still be valid based upon a hundred and twenty rental units rather than a hundred and twenty ownership units. Um, and that's something I think that it probably would be appropriate for Gary to go back to the original traffic engineer, Bill Scully, get him to submit a letter indicating, you know, what, I mean, because it, all they do is they, it's a chart, you know, they, they consult whatever the trip generation standards are for that particular type of use, they'll compare one to the other, and they'll give you a number. The other portion of it is a review of the interior of the roadway, um, which I think it, it doesn't require a traffic engineer, because it's really engineering. Is it, are the widths sufficient enough, are the radii, you know, sufficient to allow the fire trucks to get through? Um, I, I think that's something that certainly Wes and Fred can handle themselves.
Well, that's, it, but you're missing the intersection too, right, Paul? I mean, it's...
What, were we talking about a site distance issue?
Site distance.
Has the intersection changed significantly?
No, it's been five.
So...
It's, it's not.
So this could be a very simple review, we could just have...
Correct.
Uh, Gary Hebert.
I mean, you could have Bill address the, you know, the...
We're talking to the...
I don't even, I don't even know if you actually need to go back to Bill, I, I don't want to see you spend thirty-five hundred bucks to get a letter that says...
It's the, it's the trip generation thing, I think the traffic engineers tend to...
I think you got to review it if you do that for basically.
Yeah, I agree, I, I think...
Gary hasn't been involved in, longer than Bill has, I mean, he actually left, dropped out of that process relatively early.
Well, it's 2010, I mean, all you have to do is open the file back up, get back up to speed, and consider the changes, and then advise this board, are these changes material, do they, are they safe, are they dangerous, should any changes be made?
Without making a mountain out of a molehill.
Well, that, and that's what I'm worried about, because my, my view of this is, it's really a trip generation issue. If the trips generated from this proposal are not substantially different from what has already been reviewed, I mean, I don't see any need to, to take that any further. Um, and with regard to the, the site intersection in the interior, but those are really engineering issues, more so than the...
You're going to do that?
I mean, I'm more than, I'm more than happy to spend Gary's money to bring Bill...
Is Gary happy to do that?
I, I think it's...
Well, you got to be happy to do something.
I, I think we can do...
I think that would be a waste of time, I think it's a, it would be a waste, you, you, we'd lose a month to have Bill come back here with a presentation, frankly, which I don't think is going to be that worthwhile. I mean, it's, it's your call, it's your project, but...
I, I personally worry that Gary will spend even more money, and that, that's my concern.
But Gary's still going to have to review what Bill provides, I mean, it's, someone's going to have to review it. Even if Bill comes in here with a presentation, somebody has to review it for us, so...
And again, if it's, if it's simply a matter of him providing you the trip generation numbers, and they haven't changed, I mean, I, to me, that's the end of the process for the traffic engineer.
Well...
And everything else, if you, I mean, if you're talking about determining whether there's sufficient, um, site distance, and we know what the, the speeds are already, they're in the, the traffic, and it's just a measurement, if you're talking about the radii and the widths, those are just measurements.
It might be as simple as, again, it might be as simple as having a traffic engineer tell us, nothing's changed, I have no concerns. But I think this board needs to have something in its file and in the record saying that, because the last thing we want is for there to be a change, us not recognizing it, and there being an accident or something down the road.
It's the board's call. If I, if I, okay.
So who are you suggesting would do that to him, is that...
I, I mean, I would defer to Fred, I think Fred was saying that he doesn't feel he has the expertise, but...
Well, before you say that, uh, that was on actual traffic engineering, I checked already in the interior circulation for the fire trucks, I call the fire department, got their largest vehicle and so forth. I've checked the site distance, it's more the traffic generation...
Trip generation.
Trip generation issue, which I can look it up too, but I, you shouldn't have a peer review determining it and saying to the board, this is it, and they meet it when something, and then it should already be submitted and then looked at. But we're, but let's say it's two different segments, we're only talking about one of the segments of doing, of having to be redone. The interior's been looked at.
So interiors, site, site distances within the interior...
Oh, site distance from the, uh, you only come out to Waylem...
Project intersection?
Road and look both ways?
Well, that's one issue, there's the, there's the site distance of the intersection.
Right.
And then there's the site distances within the roadway network.
And that's fine, there isn't any obstacles you can see right through except for the building, but all the turning radiis are adequate for the...
Okay.
You really look at it for the fire trucks or emergency vehicles, and I did talk with the fire department and got that information from the captain.
Okay, so there may not be any interior issues at all, so the...
I don't, I don't think there is, so I would say no.
It's really just a trip generation issue, which is, you go to the chart and you see what this type of use is going to provide.
Trip generation and intersection, I want somebody to tell the board this intersection is fine.
As far as, um, traffic generation, so...
Whether it's you, or, or Gary, or somebody's.
But they, they, that should be submitted by the applicant.
So we can have Bill address that in the letter and Fred can.
We got a direction now?
I think we do.
We can relax a little?
Thank you.
Okay. Well, that sucked up a lot of time.
That was it on my report except for the waivers, and, I'm sorry, let me just go to my June twentieth. The June twentieth had two, two additional waivers, which we'll go over when we talk about the waivers. They added two to the list and gave you a revised list two weeks ago or so, and that was one of the comments, my other sec, my second comment had to do with the fire access and what I had called the captain, Richie, about again was the emergency access off of F and L right of way, takes you through Lesher streets and those back roads, and I asked him what his feelings were on utilizing that, and he said they've utilized those roads over the years and they deal with it, and they didn't have an issue as long as the turning radiis were good in the site.
So we're happy with the fire department?
Right, I was just giving an update on the, is, his, I hadn't got that comment from him before I wrote my.
So I can put with fire here, okay.
Mm-hmm.
Right. How about the police?
I'm sorry, he just requests that it be maintained, if you look on that one thing, he did request that it be maintained throughout the year for snow removal and so forth, the F and L right of way, and from what I understand, that is on your property, right Gary?
Yes.
So I did, he did ask me that, and then also that there'd be a Knox box type entry system that they can utilize to, to enter from that emergency access on the back of the site from the F and L right of way. So he would require, you should, I would, I would suggest putting that in your decision.
Okay. So that'll be your commentary when you put it in, in writing, right? Do you have a comment?
It's in writing, well, put not.
I missed, I missed that one.
This is your June twentieth letter you're talking about, right?
Yes, correct, and the fire access.
Okay, I saw that, okay.
Mr. Chairman, if I could just clarify, the need for.
Go ahead.
The need for the snow removal on the F and L right of way, it's not for the entire length of the right of way, it's only up to the emergency access.
From Lesher, well, does it already get taken care of to the water department?
To the water department.
So from that, what's it?
From the water department.
Within fifty to a hundred feet?
Past the gate.
Fifty to a hundred feet or so, I don't remember the distance, whatever, yes, to the, I'm sorry, you're correct, not the whole right of way.
Go ahead.
That was it.
That's it. I have just a couple of comments and they're probably out of line or in the wrong department, but I got a comment to myself here, the, the water lines of six inch, six inch line being not big enough to support, they're from the water department.
Did he say the water?
Pardon?
Well, no, let me clarify that, Fran McNamara, I sat down with him and he said it was adequate to six. The fire department has then written an email, do you remember when that was Lisa? Saying that it should be an eight, that's when the fire department talked about the thickness of the pavement and the water line size, that was just this, this week.
Yeah, June twenty-third.
Monday, okay. The fire department wrote a comment saying that it should be an eight inch line throughout the site.
So in your comments here though, it says that there's a separate line for the hydrants and fire extinguishers?
No, there's one line that loops throughout the whole site.
Right.
And the separate lines were when you go into the building.
Oh, okay.
There's a domestic and.
Understand.
And a separate line for the sprinkler system.
So there is, so the hydrants are still worked off that same six inch line?
Yes.
So what line is it requesting that it should be larger, and then I'd like Gary to comment on the issue.
So the fire department wants eight, the water district said six is okay.
Right, yeah, correct, the water district said six was okay. When I, the, another issue that came up was, I was trying to get comments and I didn't get them, I didn't get responses, and this response came this past Monday. But I had talked with the fire captain earlier on and, twice, and at the time, he hadn't looked at the plans, things like that, so his comment came after I wrote mine, so I was supposed to get mine to the eighteenth.
Gary, do you have comments on the issue?
Can I also?
Didn't know about it until a couple minutes ago, so I don't, I don't know what the, I don't know if they want the whole thing eight, so I'll have a discussion with the chief.
There's one other thing, do you have a plan, a plan I can put up?
Gary, you gotta come up.
Oh, you don't, I'm sorry, there's.
I'm trying to house clean here a little bit so we don't have issues.
I'm going to try to explain this, there's a water line out on Waylon Street, an eight inch, okay? There's a water line on Lesher Street, eight inch, that goes up Lesher Street almost to the end, turns right and goes in behind the water department building. From there, it goes back through the ball fields to Waylon Street, okay? The water, Fran McNamara said, we both talked about looping it in the site, what happens is they're coming off Waylon Street straight, diagonal through the open area to the, to the back and having long services to the buildings. So my, I always thought it should be looped, well Fran came up with an idea of looping it from Waylon Street through the site and to the back of the, the water line behind the water department building. So it ends up looping that way with a six inch.
Oh.
Okay, now, and the only thing that would require, probably, it's a little longer but not a lot, plus your services are a lot shorter, so it might be a wash, it requires an easement through, that the water, water district would give you to.
Correct.
Do it, which is just administrative. Now, I don't know if the water, if the fire, thinking of it, I don't know if the fire department knows that or just looked at as a straight shot being in six inch. That might be, that might be, I just thought of it just now, that might be a question, that might negate their comment, I'm not sure.
Mr. Chairman, on the, on the fire department, one fact that we're missing here is, is the fire chief sent you a letter on April eighth, and he used the word, I think strongly recommended that there be a fire protection peer review of this project, given that we're talking about large apartment buildings, and apparently that's what happened with the Emerald Place project and the Trittown project. I'm not familiar with those projects, how they were built and permitted, but his feeling was that his department wasn't capable, qualified to provide this kind of advice to the zoning board in terms of what should be required. And this, this goes right into that category of fire protection, do we, do we need a six inch line to maintain the adequate pressure for the hydrants and the stand pipes, or is the six inch adequate? So I don't know how the board wants to deal with that, he did make that recommendation, perhaps the town has somebody that refers this out to, Dick, do you know by any chance?
There are several people that we could.
So that might be something that, between now and next month, if, if we're keeping the hearing open anyway for the traffic issue, you may want to consider referring this out to one of the folks that the town uses to review the, the fire protection issues.
What does this mean to you, Gary?
I mean.
Does this mean anything to you to comment?
Yeah, I mean, as far as, as far as, as far as sprinklers go, when we go into construction, everything has to be designed by an engineer and then approved by the town. As far as flow, pressure, they do test on the hydrants, you know, in order to get that review now, they'd have to test hydrants and do all that type of stuff now, and as Mr. Hemway said earlier, I don't think, I don't know for sure, I'm just, might be speaking out of turn, but I would think that the fire department, if they knew that there was a movement afoot to change the design to stay the six inch but loop it in continuous, and make a continuous loop or loop the system, it would then be tied to a bigger pipe at each end. I mean, is the main at Waylon, is that, what's the size?
Eight inches.
They're supposedly both eight inch.
They're both eight.
Behind the water district.
So you'd have two eights tying into the six, but it would be a continuous loop and it wouldn't dead end. So in my position as the applicant, I would say, well, if you want eight, let's go eight and let me dead end it, or if you want it looped, let me go six and tie it into two eights, because I don't think it's going to be a significant difference.
And either of these would satisfy the issue in terms of being what's requested?
That would be up to the fire chief, and that's, and I.
Can we, can we resolve that issue?
I intend to have a dialogue with him.
So that's going to be, beside, we get the sewer issue for homework.
Got a lot of homework.
And we get the fire department for homework, and then you're going to communicate over through so that we all know what's going on and we're all happy, and then we can get a final memo out from, from everybody that.
I would just ask that if Mr. Hemway wouldn't mind if he could place a call to the fire chief and just have a discussion with him about what the alternate plan would look like, you know, looping it, because the plan that he had on his desk was a dead end, and he may have a different opinion on it after the fact.
Can we clean that up?
So if you would talk to him in the morning, and I speak to him tomorrow afternoon. Is that, is that all right?
What, I know, what I said was he doesn't, hasn't seen the loop, but at the same time you talk about, there's plenty of pressure in that area first of all, eighty-five to ninety pounds pressure, but the flow is what would be determined when they do the sprinkler system design, not determine, the flow that's there would be used to see if it's adequate when the sprinkler system is designed, as Gary was talking about prior to construction and getting the fire department's approval. So when you, because you have a larger line, doesn't necessarily mean you have more flow or, or speed wise, velocity wise, with a higher pressure on small line, you might still get the flow per minute that's required, but it's not known, and I don't think the fire chief would make a decision not knowing what the flow's going to be.
What does that do to?
Which leads to the comment I was going to make, this sounds like an issue that perhaps would be best dealt with on final plans, and I know that Attorney Hill had suggested the potential for a fire safety peer review. Some of that peer review I don't think could be completed until final plans were prepared, particularly with regard to the sprinklers. So to the extent that the board wants to see something like that, I think it should be addressed post-permit as part of the final plans.
Where does that leave us?
I guess I would, you know, I don't really know if, if that's adequate or not, I'd want to talk to a fire protection engineer.
Do you have any thoughts, please? I'm sorry. Do you have any thoughts on that approach, doing a review of final plans?
Of, of me doing it or someone else?
Have you, have you done? Waiting, waiting until the.
After the permit's been issued.
I'm just going to give you an opinion, strong opinion I have in general when that comes up. It's, you're in construction or you're at that point and it becomes a push, everybody pushing each other to get it done. If they do it six months prior to construction, whatever, that's fine, but not the week before the sprinklers are supposed to get ordered and so forth.
But the point of final plans is reviewed?
But final plans.
This would happen, just so, just so Fred knows, this would happen well before they even apply for a building permit.
And I've seen final plans still not be done on projects, that's what I'm getting at.
They can't.
In the construction, and then it's a push and it becomes an issue to everyone.
This board would have the opportunity to actually state whether or not they're allowed to move forward, whether the final plans were sufficient.
So no building permit be granted.
No building permits granted before.
That's more than adequate, just, it's just put off until later in the project.
Because that's the point where you're going to have all of the information you really need.
That's fine.
To make these determinations.
You seem comfortable with that, Fred?
Yes, because nothing's being approved to be constructed anyways, as long as that hasn't happened, that's fine.
Okay, any other issues?
Just, not issues, but just to deal with the waivers.
Can you give us an updated summary letter so that, go ahead.
Wes, could you issue a letter basically saying that you reviewed the items in this report and you agree with the conclusions and will make the corrections?
Well, I don't even know if a letter needs to be issued, if, if the board votes on the waivers this evening, we can easily revise the plans and supply all the revised information relatively quickly. The only thing that would be outstanding, I think, would be on the water, water main and trying to figure out what's going to happen with the water main and what size and so forth. But everything else in this letter can be addressed relatively easily. The thing that we were kind of waiting for is to see how the board voted on some of the waivers and to see.
I agree with you on the waivers, but I think as Wes was going through this.
Is the intent for the board to vote on the waivers this evening, I guess?
Well, the question for you is that on all of the things that he's asked you to do to revise the plans.
I have no issue with them. We already talked about this before.
So you're okay with writing a letter saying you're going to comply with everything he's asked for?
That's all I'm looking for.
That's all we're asking.
Correct, and, and again, the biggest issues that we always, I guess issues, but the biggest concerns that we always have is make sure that we agree on the drainage, and it sounds like Fred and I are in agreement about how the drainage has turned out, and there really was no revisions on the drainage that are being done, it's just an additional calculation, so.
Right.
I think it's only the water line is the real.
The thing that's going to be hanging out there until, until we get the fire department and the water department to agree on.
And we understand, it's just, it was everything else, we want to make sure you.
No, there was no real, there was no revision necessary that needed to be done here at this point to the plan with regards to technical point, technical points until we see how the board wants to waive.
Well, there was some things where he's asking for clarification.
Additional information, but no waiver to the design necessarily.
He wanted to find, my understanding, he wanted to know what waiver's going to be granted so he can make everything change, all the revisions and waivers all compatible, instead of changing the revisions now, asking for, still ask for a waiver and not getting it or getting it.
Right, what we were asking is to make sure that there was a letter from him saying that I agree with these points and I'm going to be adding those to the plan.
Yeah, and the water one, if you want to put that as an exception, the water one is still up in the air, I guess, but you can decide.
Okay, we're coming.
One thing about that before, Gary asked me to call the fire chief tomorrow, I have fairly full schedule tomorrow morning, I don't, I will try, but I don't know if I'll get a hold of them and be able to make contact.
Don't you run seven twenty-four?
What's that?
Don't you run on seven twenty-four?
Right, but every time I call him, it could be on the, in between on the sevens or the twenty fours, this is only one twenty-four, right?
There you go.
But I'll try to call him, I don't know if I'm going to get him, I'm not going to be available, if, if he calls back, I might not be available, in other words.
You can communicate back and forth as to when it could happen, it might be two or three days.
I'll just keep trying until I get it.
One would imagine it could be a couple of days, particularly, he's on vacation too, it's that bad time of the year.
Could be.
Okay, I just, I think we're getting, trying to get to a summary here and touch on anything that's outstanding. Is there any comments, notation regarding donation of land to the water department? I haven't.
Sorry?
Any comments regarding donation of land to the water department, is there any need for comment on that?
No.
There's no need to comment.
He'll be shown on the final plan.
Wes will show it on the final plan.
He'll show it on the plan, okay, so that'll be that.
Well, wait, wait a second, we.
I'll give you an anchor.
We need to see it to build it into, into the conditions, we can't.
I can give you an anchor if you want, so we're putting it.
I think, why can't you just show the delineation of the law that you're going to donate?
Mike, well, we can show you right now and I'll bring the plan up to you and I'll show you what we're talking about, I know we should point it to before, it's across street from the F and L right of way.
Yeah, I, the, the permit needs to be clear as to what is, what is required of you. You, you have to donate a piece of land that is shown on the plan, I mean, we, we need to point to something. I mean, you don't, you don't have to do it tonight, you can give it to us at the next hearing, but.
I got a question, how is it that the applicant's donation on his own initiative, police of land, to the water district affect our proceedings here and our decision process on this? This is an individual giving a piece of land he owns to an entity, we're not conditioning it, we're not this, we're not that, so how does that actually fall on our jurisdiction?
Well, it doesn't have to, you don't have to put it in the conditions if you don't want to, but that's something that they've offered as a concession, so I would recommend that you.
Right, but you say as a concession, Dan, but it's not benefiting us or this process, we're not getting anything in return, the water district has, but this board isn't, and not the whole town, because the water district doesn't serve the whole town, so only a portion of the town. It just seems to me that that's something between two private entities, I don't know why that should be part of our proceeding, it's just my thought on the matter, that's all.
I got, I got probably a nasty comment there to discuss pro farmer review in need for same. Why did I write that?
Mr. Chairman, I don't think we need to go there yet until we know if the conditions that the board is proposing are satisfactory to the applicant, and we won't know that until probably next year.
The only issue that could cause that to get mucked up a little bit would be the sewer fee development issue, that could muddy the waters.
Plus any other waiver.
Depending upon the outcome.
Plus any other waiver we don't grant.
Well, yeah, but I'm looking at ones that might have a cactus prickly thing that when you pick it up, it's, you got to put gloves on, but anyway, wish you good luck in that issue.
Thank you.
I wish us good luck too, by the way. We don't want to be a loser either. So there you go. I think I have covered all of the issues. Do you have any summary statements?
I'm just curious as to whether we've clarified the issue with regard to the parcel for the water.
Regarding what?
The parcel for the water districts. My understanding, Dan, you're asking for essentially an interim set of plans showing exactly where, you know, the lot lines would be for that lot? And I think what Wes is suggesting is that's an unnecessary expense to prepare, you know, a new set of plans just to show that lot when we can describe.
I don't need to, I don't need to set a plan. You could just give me one plan that has, that has the delineation of the lot that's being conveyed. I don't see how that's a major expense. I don't know if this board has actually decided that that should be a condition. I, you know, Paul just mentioned his, his opinion, so.
He's doing a reduction. You, you, you're compacting the number, the area of the plot that's in question.
Correct.
So you're condensing it and it gives you more free land, but you're getting the 40B based on the parcel as it exists. Then you're chopping off a piece of it because you're trying to do good by giving the water company someplace to go. But that is under our wing as of this moment, if I'm thinking correctly, because the parcel is the parcel in its entirety. So if you're going to chop off a piece because you're being a good person, and I say that honestly, what does it matter? Take an issue with you. What does it matter whether it has to be in the interest of the town? In this case here, it is partially interested in the town because part of the town is under this, is getting water from the water district and they, they have a need. And maybe that'll keep the builds down for those who do participate in water from the water department, which is an independent authority. So I would agree with you that if it's going to be part and parcel of the decision process to give it, then it should be so noted and conditioned upon that. And that's a benevolent condition, I would think. You got a comment on that?
Well, I would add that that was the position of the water district, that it would help to keep fees.
Pardon?
So that was the position that the water district took in, in the correspondence that they submitted to this board. Is that would, that would help to keep fees down.
I know, I say open to the board. My thought process.
It was just that, you know, like we, we said, okay, you don't have to do the granted curbing when they get the parking stats. So that was a direct trade off. That was just my train of thought. We're not getting something in return for him giving that land to the water district, the water district gets. So I just didn't see why that was something that both should be involved in what we're doing.
Because it's the same plot. It's part of that land.
The land, right, right, right.
Is part of the 40B. So we have to address it because if we don't address it, you're saying do it after the fact. I'm not sure they can do that.
It would require a modification.
It's like subdividing the lot of taking the 40Bs, say I want, because on this small parcel, I want to put all of this, these issues there and this is it. And then while you're not looking, we'll cut off a piece and do another development. That isn't the intent, but that could be.
If it would, if it would please the board, it seems to fall into a situation where they're saying no good deed is left unpunished.
Agreed.
We really don't want this to happen and that.
And I agree.
So I'd rather just leave it up to my counsel to come up with, because legally, he has the legalese to do it to protect me and protect the town and then give it away as a gift. So I was hoping that we can just stop table, talking about this and let him figure out how he's going to give it to the town.
I have no issue.
If that's okay with the board.
Personally, yes.
I mean, we're not going to do a, this is not the final, final decision tonight anyhow.
No, we're not closing the hearing tonight.
Exactly. So if you want to come back and we can, we can talk about it.
And by then Paul will have a master plan on how.
As long as we're doing it right.
I love the faith.
That's what he's paying you for, so.
Gary, since you're at the mic, I got a question that I haven't heard asked yet. How's the trash handled on this property? Where are the dumpsters? How's that collected? How's that all work?
We'll have Wes hold, well, I'll have him point it out on the, on the plan. I met with Brian Melissa and I showed him the locations where I'd liked them, so he'll, he'll notate them on the plan.
So will people bring trash from their apartment to a dumpster?
Each, each building will have a dumpster. There'll be five dumpsters, five 10-yard dumpsters on site.
So it's not going to be chutes or anything? They'll physically carry a bag outside, throw it in the dumpster?
Correct, yes.
Okay, and that'll be shaded or something and then they'll be picked up?
Yes, and then we have, well, not that it matters to the board, but we like, put a camera on the dumpster and put different cameras in different areas.
Oh, you don't want people filling them up.
Well, and if you have a problems with people littering or leaving stuff out, you can tell who the problem is and fix the problem, so it's kind of important for us.
I have hopefully one of the last, the next to last comment so that we can adjourn. The, it came to my mind that there's 120 units and 25% of those will be affordables, low income, lower income. But the whole 120 will be counted to our affordables, which is, when I first heard of it, I said, let's get this to the planning board and make it a 40R. And they didn't want that at all. And then you folks come and say, yes, we can take in, if they're rentals in perpetuity, that, that they can all be counted. So, but that leaves one open thing in my mind. 25% of them will be affordable rates. The affordability of the rates will run in perpetuity to those 25. But since the other 75 are going to be counted as affordable, is there a hook out there that, that limits or controls the rate of which the other 75 are going to be? You see why, how my logical mind comes.
Just the market, that's it.
You see what I'm saying?
Just the affordable units.
One could, yeah, but, but, but since they're all counted and that one element, that it's a, it's 120 affordables, that's what it's saying.
Right.
But you, everybody, all our attorneys are all happy. See, I wanted to make it a 40R and then we could have closed this off and you could be over the planning board, but that ain't going to happen. So anybody got a comment or should I just shut that thought process down and say there's no, there's no point here to be discussed?
Mr. Chairman, is it your concern that?
No, no, my thought, it's not a concern.
If the prices are too high, if the rents are too high on the market rate units?
Yeah.
That you would lose the ability to count them on your SHI?
Yeah.
No, there's, there's no concern with that.
So they will be counted?
Always.
All 100 units are counted?
Forever and ever and in perpetuity.
The rent of the market rate units doesn't matter.
Let's clarify that.
It's a policy issue, correct.
Let's caveat that. It's not, they're not going to be counted forever and ever. DHCD could change the rules at any time. Next year, they could change the rules and say you can't, you can't count all 100%. We're totally up to the vagaries of the DHCD. But right now, their current policy is for rental projects, if you have, you count all the units, even though only a quarter of the units are restricted.
And that, that's not a recent policy. I don't know exactly when it went into place, but it's 30 years running. And the likelihood of them changing that is pretty slim because I would, could imagine all of these towns that have previously approved rental projects, you know, upon the guarantees from DHCD that they would get to count 10%.
Yeah, I don't, I don't share Mr. Havertys.
It's, the hue and cry would be enormous. It would be enormous.
Okay.
It would take a very brave director of DHCD to do something like that.
Okay.
Or both.
Mr. Chairman?
You guys had, you asking for adjourn?
I just, I want to have the opportunity to echo what Al said in terms of the condition for that land that Gary has volunteered to deed to the water department. You know, my logic agrees with Al is that this whole parcel was a part of the 40B request and therefore I feel comfortable that it should be one of the conditions of our decision that's.
And it's my advice, Mr. Chairman, if it's going to be a condition of the decision, I need to have something that I can point to in the decision as to what exactly is being conveyed.
Yeah.
It can't just be, we're, we're going to convey three acres. It's going to be, we're going to convey this parcel that's shown on this plan.
And, and where it's going and that accounts for it.
Where it's going.
And a separate plan would adequately.
It's, a sketch plan is fine. It doesn't have to be an engineer plan.
We don't want you to withdraw the generosity, but we just want to make sure we do our paperwork right.
We'll be happy to provide a sketch plan.
Mr. Chairman, can we make a suggestion that we get on with the, get to the waivers so that we get, because there's quite a bit of discussion that will go on with those?
Well, I was getting ready to, have we got more to do on the waivers?
Lot more to do on the waivers, yeah. Yeah, we got a lot of waivers to go through.
Wes is prepared to roll right through the waivers. He has a list. He has the ones that we approved prior and then he has, will address the ones that are new.
I thought we were going to do that next meeting.
Oh, we'd like to do it tonight if we couldn't.
They've mentioned they want it tonight.
He'll sprint right through it.
Go ahead.
Are we all set? Speak if you're not. Are we all set?
Pardon?
Everything else set?
We can go back.
Are we going to go through the waivers?
Did everybody receive a copy of the waivers email last week?
The 18th?
Yeah, yes, the 18th, yes. Yep, the same night that Mr. Hamway sent out his review letter, we also sent out an updated waiver, waiver list, just so that we could all be on the same page on the number of waivers that need to be on this.
One of the things that threw me is that the count was off on some of these numbers that, in his report by one, which you've mentioned earlier.
In my, I said that 30 is the issue. Because I was basing on the original waivers. My report doesn't reflect the two, my second report reflects the two additional ones. When a little issue, the numbering changed.
Yeah.
So my numbers aren't the same as what's on the latest one.
Right.
That's why there's two or three that are different, 24 instead of 25 or something.
Correct, correct. So the first couple waivers, actually, we see them as really housekeep, housekeeping issues. Couple of zoning bylaws that restrict the, the use of more than one building, more than one dwelling building on a lot. And so what we're asking for is the ability to put five dwelling buildings on this one piece of property. So that's the first new waiver that you see there on the list. I don't know if the, it kind of seemed like the board was going along with the type of development here and this is seemed like a waiver that needs to be taken care of for this type of development to happen on this piece of property. The second waiver has to do with the allowed use of an apartment building in the Residence A District. Again, it's a new waiver as part of this development because only single and duplexes are allowed in Residence A under the zoning and then you would have to go through different planning board processes to do multiple use for three and four family units. Apartment buildings aren't allowed in Residence A and so we're asking for a waiver for that requirement there also, again, very, you know, it's one of those.
By definition, that's required, that's all.
By definition, that's required, exactly, just for this project to happen on this piece of property.
Mm-hmm.
The next item actually is a waiver that was requested before and granted by the board, but it's actually not required anymore. It's the minimum square footage for the, the lot size of 40,000 square feet. Now that it's only one piece of property of 40 acres and, and change, that we all, we have plenty enough square footage for this piece of property now. And so that waiver is off the, off the table compared to the, the previous application. So much to the next, next item. You had waived, you had waived the, again, lot size to what we had on the plan before. Again, like I said, the lot area is 40 acres for the five buildings. They all sit on the one, one piece of property, so this, this waiver is no longer required. Next item is also something that was waived before, does not, is not required under this permit that's in front of you. Before it was a lot width of 175 feet. Now because of the parcel is, the one parcel, we are well over the 175 feet of lot width and so we do not need that requirement anymore for that waiver. Similar fashion, the next waiver that you had granted before that we don't need is the 100 feet of frontage requirement. We do have more than 100 feet of frontage now under the one piece of property and so we do not need that waiver anymore. Again, same thing with the front yard offset. Before we had lots that needed the requirement for the front yard offset. Now we are well in conformance of the front yard offset under the new development, so we do not need that waiver also. Same thing with the side yard offset. Before we were within that 15-foot requirement, now we are no longer within that 15-foot requirement. We are at 71 feet from the closest side yard and so we no longer need that waiver. The next waiver is a new waiver that we do need for this project. Before, because they are single-family houses, we didn't need the waiver, but because it's an apartment building, we are asking for a waiver of the maximum height for a building. The maximum height requirement in a Residence A District is 38 feet. What we're asking for is a waiver up to 55 feet for the apartment buildings. I think you've all seen the apartment buildings and the height of the buildings. They're, they're not, I don't think out of touch with what you would think for.
55.
55 feet would be the, what's the waiver is asking for, yes. So again, that's, that's a new waiver. The next item in the waivers, it's still a waiver we're requesting and it's a request from the cluster development. It's 5.6 or 5.6.1 with regards to the cluster development bylaw that the town of Lindberg has. We asked for the waiver before, which the board granted, and we're continuously asking for that waiver under this application. The, the next item, and I know Mr. Hamway made a, made a comment also on his review letter, but what we're asking for is just a waiver from the landscape requirements. And we're not asking for no landscaping out there. I know at the last meeting, we talked about the growth that's actually coming up now on the piece of property. And so what we're looking to do is use the existing growth that's on the property to be used as the natural landscape requirement to meet this, meet the standard. But we asked for this waiver just so that when the building's going on, that if some of the growth hasn't come back to full, to full strength and doesn't exactly meet this requirement of the six-foot wide screened area, three feet high, that, you know, this waiver is allowed so that there is time for that.
That probably would only be required since of the new modification if it was the original plan.
If it was the old, if it was the old one, it wouldn't, it wouldn't.
Yeah, okay.
It wouldn't, it wouldn't be for any of the single-family homes because under the single-family homes, you don't need this requirement.
You'd manicure and everything.
But because, well, because it's a, a large parking lot, this is where this requirement comes into place. And so in Mr. Hamway's letter, he, he stated that obviously the growth is coming in healthy. I know you guys have seen the site recently and he said as long as the growth on the edges of the property are maintained and remain after the construction is completed, he doesn't see an issue with this, this waiver because the growth is coming in pretty healthy over Similar to a waiver that we had talked about before, again, we have more than one unit on this piece of property and more than two units actually on this piece of property. You do have a, a common driveway or common entrance requirement in the town that says no, no more than two dwellings can be on one, one entrance and one driveway. Obviously, with the main driveway being off Whalen Road serving the five buildings, we're obviously looking for a waiver for that, that item. We do have secondary access that's gated off of F and L right of way, which you're aware of, but that would still put us at two and a half dwelling buildings per, per Before you had waived the requirement that a driveway couldn't be within 25 feet of a street intersection. We no longer need that requirement because we are not proposing any new streets in here on this development. And the proposed driveway on F and L right of way and Whalen Road are further than 25 feet from the closest street intersection. A new waiver that, the next waiver here is a new waiver. In the Residence A zoning district, the sign requirements in the Residence A zoning district are very strict, which makes sense if you're dealing with a single-family home. Your only, your sign can only be three square feet in size. Again, like I said, makes sense for a single-family home, but for a, a complex like this, it doesn't allow Mr. Lorden to put a, an entrance sign out on Whalen Road to really, you know, show off his development. And so what we're asking for is a waiver from that section. I know Mr. Hamway did make a comment in his letter stating that he didn't have an issue with regards to the waiver as long as the placement of the sign does not impede the site distance at the main entrance off of Whalen Road. And obviously, we, we'd have no problem making that as part of the condition. At this point, Mr. Lorden hasn't come up with a design for that sign. And if that's something that the board would like to see at a later date, just so you can get a look at what the sign looks like, but that's something that kind of comes later on in the process. You know, it's something that he was intending to do. It's just a matter of what it's going to look like, how it's going to play out with the rest of the development and when it actually gets put in is kind of still up in the air.
About the size of that sign?
Yeah, we need a dimension and we can't just-
Four by eight is-
Where is it on the plans? You got to show it on the plan in the intersection for us.
Yeah, we'll show you on the updated plan, a general, a general location, yeah.
So we'll talk about this waiver when you show the updated plan?
Yeah, and it's, like I said, it's a four by eight, so it's 32 square feet, which if you look at your regulations in the commercial districts, that kind of meets in that, that square footage allows in the commercial district or any of the other districts other than the residence districts. And that's kind of what we're looking at is that size, similar to what you would see in any other zoning district in the town.
So Mr. Chair, can I recommend we table this waiver until they provide plans that show the size, the actual details of the sign? We cannot vote, we cannot vote on this waiver until we see that.
That's so noted. Make a motion to-
Well, why not if they've already identified the square footage?
Yeah, but they don't show where on the plan. We don't know where in the intersection this plant, this sign is proposed.
I know, but-
We can't say by sight. We can't even look and say, okay, this makes sense. It could impede on anything or anything like that, or this might be a detriment to the look of the neighborhood that we have without seeing exact plans of where the sign is and what the sign might look like on the plans.
I don't, I'm not prepared, I'm not prepared to do a sign design at this time.
So we wouldn't, we wouldn't be prepared to grant a waiver then? You know, you'd have to do a one and a half by two-foot sign.
So that's up to the board, not just the sign.
Right, I understand.
We can show the location of the sign on the plan. We have no issue showing the location on the sign on the plan. We have no issue setting limits on the size of the sign. It's just a matter of how that sign's going to look is, has a deterrent at this point, so.
So you'll show that on the plan that's presented to the next, at the next meeting?
We can do that, yeah.
So if-
After this meeting, I might have a better idea of what the board wants to do with these waivers. I can revise my plan and show that sign on there also.
From my perspective, I think what's important is know where it's going to be positioned.
Yeah, and we can show that right on the plan.
The size.
Yep, and we can give you a square footage, yes.
Including height and all of that.
Yep, and that's fine, yep, yep. We'll give you, exactly, we can give you the dimension, it's just the aesthetic appearance, but we just don't know what's-
You already have it, Townsend, you already have-
We don't have that up and I don't mind, and I'm not trying to be a wise guy, but I don't mind the board conditioning to say it must be in keeping with other signs as determined by the building official. It's just two years from now when I'm done, if someone comes up with this great look of cultured stone and they get, or something like that, a piece of granite, I say, that looks awesome and I'd like to do that. Well, I can't do it two years from now because today or tomorrow, I told you I would do this holly sign.
I suspect you want it to be attractive.
So long as that new material is-
I don't mind the condition, it's based on the approval of the building.
Within the size that we specify or you agree to.
Yeah, but we got a sign by law.
Sure, and I don't mind coming into the board with, you know, you can make a condition that I come back in with the design-
Sure.
At the time.
That's what we do.
I have no problem with that.
Yeah.
I just wouldn't want to give you the design today in case I want to change it tomorrow.
Yeah, well, I'm sure that, I'm sure the one you want to put up, if I'm seeing what you've done, it's going to be highly attractive.
Sure, so I don't mind a condition like that at all.
Yeah.
Can you tell us how you're going to light it too, please?
Yeah, and there are requirements that the town has, I know, with regards to how you can light the signs. So, you know, we're not looking for any waivers from how you light the signs, you know, we're going to obviously comply with that. It's really the size of the sign that is really restrictive here. You know, it's a three, three square feet isn't anywhere close to being large enough for a project of this size to advertise it next to the street.
You got to be at the edge of the road. I don't want to bother the neighbor across the street.
We would probably object if you come in across the line on the Pittsburgh-Lunenburg line on 2A and the first time you see that comes in, we would probably have some severe objections in that case. But you do it the right way. You just come back and you say, this is it. It could actually be outside-
We'll come back and get an approval.
It could be outside the domain of the 40B. You would agree?
I'm not sure if I understand that.
The sign, the sign aspect of it, if after he's all done, he wants to pull up a sign, he comes in front of the board for approval for a sign that's under our sign by law, that could actually be outside the domain of the 40B.
Well, we want to, we want to ask for the waiver now, the dimensional requirement.
Yeah, I think what they're proposing is that they show the location of the sign and what the dimension is going to be and then they'll come back later as a post-permit condition in getting your approval of the actual design.
Condition that we approve-
Yes.
The product.
Correct, correct. And that's, we have, again, no problem with that.
Sounds reasonable to you, doesn't it?
So the, so the next waiver on the list actually corresponds with that previous waiver is we're asking for a waiver from the section that allows for the distance or the proximity to the road. Again, in a Residence A District, you can't have it more than 50% of the required front yard offset. But again, like because, because of the type of development here, we're looking for a waiver from that and we'll have that specific information at the next meeting for you so you can at least have that dimension. We'll put that dimension right in that waiver for you so you can see. And again, we understand, you know, Mr. Hamway's concern not to block the site distance out of that intersection, that new intersection. There's no issue there. The next item was something that was waived prior and we're still asking for a waiver from it. It's the development review, development plan review by the planning board. Obviously, because we're doing the 40B process in front of the ZBA, we're asking for a waiver from that section. It was something that was waived by the ZBA prior and we're looking again for that waiver. The next items were a couple of items that were waived prior but aren't applicable to this, this project anymore. We asked for a waiver from the requirement to submit a preliminary and a definitive subdivision plan because this is no longer a subdivision. We aren't asking for a waiver from those two sections. And so those are basically stricken off the waivers that we'd be asking from this board under the current proposal. The next waiver that was waived under the prior submittal, but we are not requiring that, or asking for that waiver currently, had to do with some of the dimensional standards in the zoning bylaw previously, which we already talked about. They talked about it in the subdivision rules and regulations again, so it was just piggybacking on some of the requirements that we aren't asking for from the zoning dimensional requirements because we do meet those now. Next item would be, again, something that was waived prior. We're not asking for it now. Before, there was some waiver on the grade of the road because we had a grade that was changed in excess of a half percent that we didn't have a vertical curve. Now, under our proposal, we do not have that condition, so we aren't asking for that waiver. The waiver we asked before was waived and we are not asking for it, and I know we've talked about this already, is that prior we had some lots that were actually being serviced by wells. Now, everything on this project is going to be serviced by the Lunenburg Water District and so we are no longer asking for that waiver. Couple of new waivers here and I know Mr. Hamway had some comments again and if you want, Mr. Hamway to talk about them, I can, I know what his comments were. The first one had to do with the cover over the drainage. And this is something that we've had comments with the planning board in the past and so when we ask for this waiver, we know if we are under three feet of cover, but more than two feet of cover, we were still allowed to use a plastic pipe. But if we're under two feet of cover, we have to use a ductile iron pipe. And so that's, that's what we're proposing here is when we're less than three feet of cover on the drains, but also less than two feet of cover on the drain, which I know occurs in one spot in the plan, we do show a ductile iron pipe. But anywhere else that we're less than three feet but more than two feet of cover, we're still showing the plastic pipe. And Mr. Hamway had reviewed our plans and he was, you know, comfortable with that, that waiver as long as we do propose the proper pipe type on those pipes that have less than three feet of cover.
Excuse me, Wes, you did say that they shouldn't be any less than two feet. You said there might be, here is another one that's less than-
You have to get up.
I'm sorry. I did, I did state that the pipe cover should not be less than two feet. I believe you just said there is some, one or two areas less than two feet. And it does create, with Frosties, it can create the pipe to lift, so it's not just the issue of load over the pipe. But at the same time, anything less than three feet, I put in my comments, should be the adequate size type class pipe to withstand the loads. But there shouldn't be any under two feet. Okay?
Do you agree with that, Wes?
We're fine with that. All right, the next two items, and actually I believe, the next two items actually have to go along with, Mr. Hamway already said that he doesn't, doesn't necessarily agree with the waivers that we are asking for and I know the fire department, you had said, had made comments about it and I think Jack Rodickins also made comment on it. But the new, next two waivers with regards to the total depth of gravel and pavement together and also specifically the pavement depth. And so what the requirements are is, under subdivision rules and regulations, 12 inches of gravel, three inches of a binder and one and a half inches of a top course. And so what we were asking for was 12 inches of gravel, again, still keeping that same base underneath the pavement as Mr. Lorden was talking about, which, you know, from our standpoint is where the structural stability of the pavement comes from. And then an inch of, an inch and a half of binder and then one inch of top course. And so that was our request for the waiver. And I know Mr. Hamway made recommendations that weren't all the way up to the standard of the town, but weren't all the way to what we were asking for the waiver. It was kind of middle, middle of the road. Tonight was the first time we've heard about the fire department making comments about the pavement width, so I don't know if they made a specific comment about the pavement thickness and I'm not sure if Mr. Rodickins also has made a specific comment about the pavement thickness. So I don't know if the-
So you're going to hold this and work with the fire department?
Well, what did the fire department make a comment about? I guess, the first time we heard the fire department had more comments than what we had already heard about was, you know, tonight, so.
I know just from the email we got that the fire department said the rules and regulations of three inches of binder and one and a half. Whatever the rules are of the town should be held to and he thought, from what he said here, he thought that Jack Rodickins would agree with that.
And he did.
Okay, I didn't know Jack.
It's in that email.
Okay, I did not see that one. I had, I had recommended it be at least two inches of gravel, two inches of binder, an inch and a half. And just to make a correction from what Gary said earlier on, I believe he said there's going to be 12 inches of gravel and a four inches of another course of material.
Crushed concrete.
But that's not on you, that's not-
No, no, no.
It's not on the plans, just so what he said before was incorrect. Not, you're saying there's going to be 16 inches of material under the pavement. There is only to 12 that's required. And that was said earlier in the hearing.
Okay, I've heard a number of alternatives, so what is it going to be? Then, then, tell me again.
What's the proposal?
Well, the proposal is 12 inches of gravel. I'm going to say what the proposal is, and you just correct me.
Yes.
12 inches of gravel, two inches of binder and an inch and a half of top.
No.
No, an inch of top. No, what's proposed, no, what's proposed on the plans? What's proposed on the plans?
12 inches of gravel, one and a half inches of binder and one inches of top. But what Mr. Lorden was just offering up earlier was 12 inches of gravel, four and a half, four inches of crushed concrete, which wasn't on the plans. And then, again, one and a half inches of binder and one inch of top. And where that four inches of crushed concrete basically replaces some of the lost thickness of the pavement.
Just restate that so I can get it down.
Sure, 12 inches of gravel.
12 inches of gravel.
Four inches of crushed concrete.
Four inches concrete.
One and a half inches of base.
Now, crush concrete is, you make concrete and then you chop it up?
They take it, recycling plants take concrete from block buildings or buildings that have been taken down and they bring it to their plant, they crush it up and then they resell it.
So I can get rid of my, the bags that I never used and the solid rock I can bring it over.
On his site.
Yeah, bring it down to Gary, yeah, Gary.
They do crush brick, they do crush concrete.
Okay.
And they crush it within different thicknesses and the stuff, especially when you roll it out, it's like concrete.
So, let me see if I got this straight.
Yeah, I'm with you.
12 inches of gravel, four inches of crushed concrete, one and a half inches base and one inch top.
Correct.
What size stone and the binder?
I don't know if it's a, they use an inch and a half, I think.
And an inch and a half base, they're going to use an inch and a half stone?
It's three, it's a three-quarter base and then the top is half of it.
Half, three-eights, yeah.
But in the crushed concrete, it's a three-quarter crush. So you'll have new plans to, for the, for the DPW and for the fire to? What we'll do is I'll, we'll meet, I'll meet with, I'll meet with the highway and I'll just make sure that they're happy with what we're doing before we put it on the plan. So we'll table this waiver again? We'll table this, we'll hope, we'll put this waiver off this one.
Maybe that's why they were asking for the thicker because they didn't realize you're putting the four inches in.
Probably. I swear by the crushed concrete, we use it for everything.
Oh, I know, it sounds like a win-up.
It's fantastic.
The next waiver is something that we talked about at the last meeting. On the plan, we had originally shown the sidewalk being separated with a grass strip and then we had asked, added that as a waiver that there'd be no grass strip between the back of the berm and the sidewalk. And so the sidewalk would be right up to the back of the berm.
That's for our maintenance, maintenance request, right?
Yeah, maintenance request. There's no cost savings there and that's where, you know, with regards to installation, it was more of a maintenance issue because you don't see the grass strip really, because it's only a four-foot wide grass strip, a lot of times you don't see it grow as well. Sometimes you end up seeing the grass kind of die in between the two strips of pavement. And so that was a maintenance issue that Mr. Lorden wanted to see in his complexes, the pavement, the berm and the sidewalk and then have more grass on the backside of the sidewalk.
Mr. Hamway, do you get a comment on that?
I understand the reason for the request, but the reason, my understanding the reason why it is the way it is is for safety purposes. As we all know, we probably all hit a curb before driving and as soon as we do, normally speaking, we correct it quickly enough. But if the sidewalk is right against it, the bumper's going to go over the curb, correct? Even if we correct it fast enough. Yes, it's only four feet away and very unlikely you hit a curb, you're going to keep on going, but it can happen, but more likely you're going to come back into the traveled way. So it is a safety reason. I think if I had to decide, I would feel too much liability and I wouldn't allow, I'd make sure we had the strip.
So can I ask another question on that? So would it make any difference whether this was a, you know, an asphalt berm or a granite curbing, in your opinion?
Granite curb is, they're going with the Cape Cod berm, which has the slope.
I understand.
So that's easier, much easier than even an asphalt curb that's straight six inches high or a vertical granite curb. This is, those are more of a deterrent.
So you're saying, so what you're, in your opinion, the curbing that they're suggesting is also making, would make this also more of a safety hazard than a different curbing?
Right. And I think it puts, I don't know who's liable to end. Maybe the board would be just as liable as the owner if something happened. Maybe the peer review engineer would be just as liable as saying it's okay. But I think there's a liability that we all should be aware of.
Liability on whom?
I think on everyone.
There's no liability of the board, but certainly it's your obligation to make sure that this project's safe. So I think, you know, you got to weigh their, the reason for their request versus whether or not this is going to present some sort of safety concern.
Well, my question is, does the applicant feel that based on the discussion, he's going to put himself in harm's way?
I'm going to go with, with the decision of the board. I'm doing, I've requested to have it adjacent to the berm.
And I agree with the top course.
And for the looks in the salt burning out the lawn. It just, it looks, the project looks better. If the board, if the board thinks that I should put it five feet, I'll put it five feet.
Yeah, but I'm worried about you getting in the big lawsuit. I don't want you, it happened to you.
If someone's going to go over a berm, they're going to go over a berm. I'm more concerned about someone, no sidewalk on Whalen Road at all. At least there's a sidewalk in the subdivision. The traffic's going much slower. I don't, I personally don't see that as a big issue.
So you don't think you're in harm's way?
I don't think I'm in harm's way.
Would you have your attorney attest to that, so?
I'll have him right with me. But I would, my preference would be to put it next to the berm. If the board feels strongly about it differently and the only reason why, it's not going to save me any money, it's all about the look and how much-
I personally liked your idea, see, they're knocking it down.
Maybe just do a quick straw vote. I'll go with whatever the board decides. I'm, I'm happy to go either way.
Okay.
Is, is, Mr. Chair, is there a way of us granting this for the, for the interior of the complex, however, at the intersection with Whalen Road? Then that's where the, that's when we want the grass at the intersection?
It actually has to be separated at Whalen Road because there's a telephone pole in between.
Okay, so there will be grass at Whalen Road?
Right at the intersection, there's a telephone pole that's going to be right in between the road and the sidewalk.
I'm talking about that whole strip, the entrance way, before you hit the main circle.
So basically we're saying you do it for the main strip and then we want to do it the other way?
Where would you want to?
Because this way people come first. Oh, you're talking about moving, you're talking about moving the sidewalk over five feet?
Yeah, just for the neighbors.
That's fine.
For how far into the project?
I'm looking at just the entrance way till it hits the main circle of the project. Just so that that section of it where people would be, the most congestion of people walking and the people who would be going the fastest as they enter and exit this complex, you'd have that safety feature.
And we can note that in the waiver language, that it's just within the loop road, within the development and not within the entrance off of Whalen Road. the development, and not within the entrance off of Waylon Road, that's, that's something that we could obviously note right in the language.
I guess I know he's gonna have to control the speed inside his development, otherwise he's gonna have a lot more problems.
What are you saying here?
Something I'm saying, what I'm saying for this whole section.
I'd support that idea of having it against the curb inside of the separation at the entrance. Because I am, you know, I think that the applicant makes a good point about the appearance, because I can imagine the salt on there, where you're gonna have just a brown strip of grass.
Right.
In spring, rather than green. So I think that that is a valid consideration.
And then if we wanna irrigate, then you're irrigating, you've got, instead of irrigating from the curb out and making everything green, you typically would either have to put more irrigation over there, and then plows peeling it up, or doing whatever, it's just, it just never, from the aesthetic look, it never looks good at the end.
Well, aesthetically, you, the solution would be, you'd have to reestablish the planting or whatever is in there every spring, so it's a cost issue.
What'd be suggested is a good compromise, make the main entrance coming in, have it be 5 feet off, and the spring, if we have to re-landscape that area, then we have to re-landscape the area.
And, and maybe the suggestion would be that you make it 8 feet off, or whatever number you can make it, that way you have more of a...
Oh, then I'll just have more ugly to do. 5, 5 feet would be great.
I'm looking, I'm looking at your plows, not, the plow, you're saying there's not gonna be that much down?
We won't have an issue with that, it's mainly the sand, and it's, it's always gonna rip up that, I mean, as far as, it's gonna kill that area, but at least if we can control the re-landscape for that entry, that's fine, but continuously do it through the whole project is a lot, and it doesn't look nice. So I think that's a good compromise, and I'm happy with that, if the board's happy with it.
How about just putting pavers in the grass area, and that way you don't have to worry about it? You'd never have to re, reseed it, read nothing.
I know, it'd look nice, I agree.
Let's go with that.
Moving on.
That's the turn.
So the, the next item has to do with the installation of the granite curb, and under the previous submittal, this was waived for the grade of anything that exceeded 5% and anything that had a curve that was less than 250 feet. This was waived before. We aren't asking for a waiver for one of these sections of the subdivision regulations, because we don't have any roads greater than 5% anymore, but we still have some radii that are less than 250 feet, so we are still asking for that waiver. Again, that was re, waived by this board before, and it's still asking for that same waiver. The next waiver that we're asking for is on the tree planting. The subdivision rules and regulations state that it has to be 40-foot intervals, what we're asking for is up for a 70-foot interval, and when I say 70-foot interval, it's, it's basically our greatest interval between trees. Under Mr. Hamway's responses, he made a comment on this, that he said, when he measured it, there are intervals of 40 feet in some areas because of the way the roads laid out, and 70 feet in other areas because of the way the roads laid out. Again, because it's a private development, that was what we were looking for, the plantings, and also combined with the plantings that are gonna happen in front of the buildings, Mr. Lorden thinks that it's gonna look nice aesthetically within the development without overcrowding basically of the trees and so forth, and so, and I know Mr. Hamway didn't have an issue with it because it was a private development anyway, so, I don't know if the board has any comments with regards to that, but again, it's a subdivision regulation, it's, it's kinda tough to take a subdivision regulation and put it to an apartment complex, really. The next waiver has to do with the cover over sewer mains, the requirement is 5 feet, what we're looking for is that waiver from that, and what we said in our requirement is that anything that's less than 4 feet, that obviously we would insulate that pipe, anything less than 4 feet, it's, it's industry standard, and so we do have a couple of the sewer services that are less than 4 feet. And so when Mr. Hamway reviewed that, he just made note that make sure that if the board does waive this, to make sure that's part of your condition of the waiver, is that anything less than 4 feet, it is insulated, it's shown on the plan like that, and so we're not asking for any kind of extra consideration from there, other than, obviously, we're looking to design it properly, other than the requirements 5 feet in the town. This next waiver might not actually be a waiver, depending on how the fire department comes back on their discussion, what we were asking for was a waiver from the requirement of an 8-inch water main, water main size throughout the development. Obviously, we asked for a 6-inch, the water district, obviously, you know, said 6-inch was fine, as long as we looped it, and so now we have to have a conversation with the fire department to see if they're okay with a looped 6-inch water main. If they're not, we're not gonna ask for that waiver, and that waiver will be off the table. I did actually miss one, sorry about that. Back to the granite curbing, and I know the granite curbing at the intersection of Waylon Road, we did ask for a waiver for that, we asked for the bituminous berm throughout the whole development, I know Mr. Hamway did make a comment with regards to the bituminous berm throughout the whole development, he said because it's a private development, he doesn't have any issue with the waiver for bituminous throughout the whole development, because Mr. Lorden will be on the hook to replace the bituminous berming, berm if it gets nicked by plows or anything like that, so it wouldn't be an issue from his standpoint, because Mr. Lorden is on, on the hook for maintenance of the curb throughout the development. So if it's bituminous or granite, you know, if the bituminous obviously gets hit by plow, it's a bloody deal.
Where are you, you've lost me, where are you?
Sorry about that, it was item number 26.
Oh, okay.
Are you saying this is all the way through to the intersection of the...
Correct, all the intersections, yes, would also have bituminous berm.
Okay, so I, 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 it's up to the board, but I would have, I would have issues with this, but just aesthetically, that the town has a certain look, and the look is to have that curbing the same for driveways and things of that sort, and I'd like to keep that look throughout the town.
Any other, I guess?
Other, other areas that we, we've had to break the curb for a driveway, they've had to replace it with the same thing that was already there.
Is that something we could, kind of what Gary was talking about earlier, get a straw vote from the board, and if it's, uh, not gonna get waived, then it's something that we can obviously add to the plan now, so it's, it's on the plan, or if it's gonna get waived that we know, and we can kinda keep the plan the way it is? Is that something that we can get a, a feel from the board now, or? No?
You're, what you're talking about is just the entryway in here?
No, it's the intersection of Waylon Road.
Just right here where Waylon Road is.
Right in there, the very tip of it?
That's correct.
Yes, the, the town requirement is to have all the radii at the intersection of a street, and then 15 feet from the intersection to have granite, is how the requirement reads. And so we're asking for a waiver from that specifically.
Are you saying we waived this in 2010?
I don't think this was discussed in 2010.
No, we did discuss this in 2010, because there was a talk about the cost of the granite in relation to the, I believe it was the equipment for the playground.
I thought that was in the interior of it.
Yeah.
But that was the trade-off, to let you do the business to...
And, and that was some of the trade-off.
Yeah, I, I've got the waiver, Mr. Chairman, I've got the waiver block from our decision, and what we did is we waived, we allowed the bituminous Cape Cod berm throughout the project, except for the project's, project roadway's intersection of Waylon Road, which shall be vertical granite curbing. So I don't think we waived that, I mean, I think what we did is consistent with what David is suggesting, that the intersection be granite, but the rest of it be Cape Cod.
Well, I'm fine with doing the entry and the radius, then 15 feet.
As a standard.
And then, as a standard, and then waive the rest, and the rest be Cape Cod. I'm fine with that.
Perfect.
Okay.
It stands the same, Mike, Dan, Dan, it would stay, stay the same as we had.
Yes, so no change.
Correct. And the plans will be, you know, reflect that, that that waiver was no longer requested, so. The, the next waiver, and I know this waiver is gonna be completely changed, I'm not even gonna talk about, obviously, it's a sewer, sewer issue, obviously, once Mr. Lorden has a conversation with the sewer commission, that, that waiver's gonna be modified, and however it ends up working out. The next one was from the Board of Health, we no longer need a waiver for the wells that were on any of the lots, again, like I said, it's Lunenburg Water District, no longer need that waiver. The last waiver that we added actually came from some of the comments from Mr. Hamway, under the, it's a long title of the regulations, but the regulations of the planning board are the town of Lunenburg governing design, construction, maintenance of off-street parking loading areas, and it's a very old obscure regulations that they have still in the town. Under one of the items, it says, where there's more than 20 spaces, or more than 40 spaces when they're back-to-back, you have to have islands basically within your parking, and so we're asking for a waiver, and I know we talked about that before, is the way the parking had set up, we had shown basically hatch areas, islands, instead of landscaped islands for maintenance purpose-wise. It was one of those things that, Mr. Lorden and his maintenance of the project is a lot easier to plow the whole site without having to bump into islands every so often within the project, and so that was one of the waivers that we did add to the list at the end here, to not have the, the raised islands within the development. So, something that, again, for conversation with the board, and I don't know if the board has any thought on that waiver, I know, like I said, it's a new waiver, it's something that we kinda just brought up as part of the review by Mr. Hamway for this item. No, the, the whole, the whole parking field is back, the whole parking field is back-to-back.
Yeah, but I mean, there's none other in town, you know, other? Okay, we've covered the waivers, right?
We have covered the waivers, and, and just so, if we go back to that last item, I, I think the rest of them, we have a good feel of how the board would go either way with regards to them, I know we need to get some more feedback from the DPW and the fire department with regards to pavement thickness and so forth, but does the board have any feel about how they would take the last waiver with regards to the islands in the, in the parking lot, is there a...
Mr. Chairman, if I could make a suggestion, first of all, this issue I actually raised at the last meeting, and the towns that I work with east of here, more typically, it's almost, almost all the regulations have requirements that you have internal landscaping in parking lots, but, you know, it, it, my, my overall, I guess, concern or question is, you know, should we have the planning board review this, this list of waivers, since there are a lot of new ones here? That, that's up to you folks, but that, that might be something which you might wanna consider between now and the next hearing, is, is shift this off to the planning board to get their input, because these are really a lot of their regulations, and it's a lot of the issues that they deal with.
It's like, when we grant some permits, we condition it upon, and your appropriate right to the, the planning board, because they handle development plan review, and are more acutely aware of the, the requirements and needs, so maybe your thought process is appropriate. The question is, how quickly can we, yeah, put that together and get a response from the planning board in that regard?
Well, this can just be sent tomorrow, I mean, in its current form, the waiver request.
Trusting to Lisa, but then it's a question for them to act on it.
Right.
In other words, we would like it, you know, if we can do the paperwork right now, but to have them review it, and to review it more from their expertise in development plan review, parking layouts and so forth, the issues with handicap parking, if that's required, or, there are, are there specialties that, that you have considered in, in regard to the various questions they may ask or demand?
I guess if I can interject on this one, just so, so we've had a lot of experience with the planning board in Lunenburg, we've done all sides of the table, review and design in front of them, and so how the planning board works is they'll usually refer back to the review engineer, in this case would be Mr. Hamway, I guess from the standpoint of this board, and so, and that's how they usually act, even on their waivers.
But they, in fact, it's like a do-loop that comes back to you for...
It would come, it would basically come back to the same person, I think you're gonna probably gonna ask your, your professional opinion from, you know, your, your peer review engineer here, is, it's gonna come back to Mr. Hamway in this case, because...
Why don't we, I mean, that may be true, but I, I think you ought to just give the planning board an opportunity to say that, I mean, if they don't have, if the members of the planning board individually do not have personal opinions about this stuff, then, then fine, but...
I would put it this way, is from my, from my perspective, is we have, with due diligence, went out to all boards, including the planning board, the planning board did respond to us into their thought process, and they effectively took the fifth, I think, if that's a good way to say it.
Well, they haven't seen the waiver list, Mr. Chairman.
I understand, but to simply send them to them and ask for comment, put a tight timeline, timeline, and if, and then request them is, be upfront, you get your input from, from our consultants, and be satisfied, because it may be a do-loop, like you say, because they constantly go back to you previously, or even now.
And we just, actually, we're in front of them this past Monday, and it's the same thing, they asked us for our opinion on some items, so...
So I agree with you, that they, we should expose them to them, because that's what we do, we, we sit in their shoes, and we're looking for comments, and if they get some quick comments, we can't turn around and have, have them come back 2 months from today.
No, I think, I, I don't think it's, well, I think giving them the oppo...
I have no...
Yeah, I think just giving them the opportunity to comment on the waivers that fall within their jurisdiction on a, on a conventional basis, such as the, all the, you know, the, these road standards, the parking lot standards, those are things that they review, if they don't have an opinion, and they would say, "We defer to Fred," then you have, then you have your answer. But if they come back and say, "Gee, we really feel strongly that there should be internal landscaping in the parking lot," then that's another factor that you should be weighing in your decision.
Lisa, can you conjure up a communications letter to the planning board with regard to the various waivers, and say that has been requesting the planning board review the waivers quickly?
By the date of our next hearing. By the date of our next hearing.
Before the date of the...
A few days before the next hearing.
By the way, it would have to be a week before, however, do we want to give them a chance to have to review the planning board comments before our meeting?
No, as I have no problem with the planning board do it, but then you, you see, you were looking behind the scenes, and you're, and you're appropriately saying, "Well, you sent it to them, and they'll call us," they're probably trying to call you.
They, they, they'll probably try calling Fred.
Well, no, I understand, they're, so they're used to calling you. Fred, do you do, work with them a lot?
I just, I just recently was obtained...
Was standby?
As the second review engineer, if and when, and being was proposing a site.
Okay.
No, I, it's been, I have in the past, but it's been, this is a new services to...
Okay, put a tight chain on that request, and then we come back, if they say nothing, they stand mute, then we're, then we will be the judge.
Mr. Chairman, you and I met with the planning board...
Pardon?
You and I met with the planning board, and we reviewed the concept, and they, as you indicated, decided not to render an opinion on the project, but I think they might appreciate the opportunity to look at some of the...
To review it.
...tail waivers.
But it has to be a tight chain of time, because we...
I'll follow up with Lisa and help get, get that in process, if that's all right.
Give them 2 weeks, give them 2 weeks to review it and respond.
Well, I think to be fair, you ought to...
Pardon?
Maybe not.
If, if they don't have a hearing schedule for another 2 weeks, I, I think you ought to just...
Do we know when the next hearing is? Generally, planning boards meet every other week.
They do meet every...
So do they meet 2 weeks from last night?
Yes.
So that should be sufficient time.
Well, it may not be, if it's, if it's only 2 meetings a month, it might be July 8th, so...
Our next meeting's in 30 days.
Plenty of time, there's, there's gonna be a planning meeting between now and your next meeting, so...
Well, someone calls me on the phone, and they put a tight chain around my neck, you know what I do, is I respond to it within the, the tight window.
If I could ask a question, I think it's important to, to understand that this is no longer a subdivision, so technically, these aren't waiver requests, an applicant that's not proposing a subdivision is not required to obtain waivers from subdivision rules and regulations. What the board can do is look to the road construction standards and determine whether or not those, you know, should be imposed as conditions. We included them in the waiver list, just so we, because it was previously a subdivision, wanted to make sure everything was there, you're reviewing sort of apples to apples, it made it a lot easier for comparison purposes. I think what really should be done, I don't know what the planning board generally does, but wouldn't the DPW look to the construction standards and determine, you know, what they were satisfied with, is that really a planning board issue, the, the road construction, the width of pavement, and that sort of thing, and I think the DPW, that they would look to the DPW, you know, for those responses anyhow?
It's in the planning board's subdivision regulations.
I'm aware of that.
Right, so when, when an applicant comes for subdivision approval and asks for a waiver from the subdivision rules and regs, it's the planning board that grants those waivers.
And, and again, I understand that, but presumably they do that in consultation with DPW.
Fine, and if they say, again, I, I go, and I'll say it again, if, if they say, "We don't have an opinion, we'll defer to Jack," or "We defer to Fred," then the board has its answer, but if they have an opinion...
I have absolutely no qualms about sending a letter out to, to planning board and asking them for their input, what my concern is, is of course, holding up the process if they're not able to turn it around quickly enough.
Well, they may come up with a gem or two, they may come up with nothing, they do, they, they took the fifth one time, they'll probably take the fifth again.
And ultimately, it's the board's decision.
So we'll have done due diligence of getting comments, has been, you know, that's what we are, we're here to suck up, we're, we're all amateurs, but they put a heavy burden upon our shoulders to get educated pretty quick.
And, and I think the, the discussion from the planning board, you know, when they were presented with this previously, was a very reasonable discussion.
Keep it up, we'll be smarter than them.
I'll try to save you from having that get there.
Where are we, I'm lost now.
I think we're at a point where Mr. Hill is getting almost ready to write the draft decision, that may be the assignment you want him to work on after this meeting, and he may have some issues that he wants to run by the board in the last decision to see whether it's still appropriate?
Yeah, I mean, we, we could, we could do that at the next hearing, but I, I think it would be appropriate to run through the conditions of the last decision quickly, to make sure that, I mean, some of them may be, some of them are obsolete.
Yeah.
Some of them may, may need to be modified, so we should go through that together at So we should go through that together at some point, doesn't have to be tonight.
Are you going to try to generate a draft for us?
Yeah, I think, I think that...
I think we gave enough information to start to, you know, we could go on forever. I'd like to have this done before Christmas.
Is there anything you need to do the draft decision?
Anything more I need from the board? I don't think so. I think we can draft something, there's going to be a lot of holes to fill in, but we can fill those in at the next hearing and deliberations.
I think we got one other business is public discussion. Anybody who stayed here this long might have something to say. So if anybody in the audience would like to...
Hopefully, he has something to say.
Mr. Chairman, if I could, just real quickly, Mr. Lord indicated to me that if there's an issue with getting a response back from the planning board by the next hearing, it may be smarter to simply schedule the next hearing for 60 days out rather than 30 days. What we don't want to run into is a situation where we have to come back here in extra time and not be productive and not spend the...
I think we, I think the chairman mentioned that, that the planning board meets within two weeks. We look for them to have a decision then, and therefore that would give you time to review their decision based on the waivers, and we should be all set for next meeting.
We just don't want to have to come here four times for...
They might be called, but all it is, is it's, it gets in the domain of house cleaning that we didn't, we make sure we take the dirt out of the corners and give them a shot at it. If they come back and they, if they don't respond appropriately for you to have enough time, then we will ignore their advice because that says that they didn't have enough interest in the subject matter, is the way I look at it.
You should know within six weeks whether we have to postpone.
We have, we have someone that would like to talk. We welcome.
We want to hear it.
Sue Bunish, 30 Pleasant View Ave.
You get the name again?
Sue Bunish, 30 Pleasant View Ave.
Okay.
I just had a question in regards to the status of the, the property on Pleasant View and Piedmont side of the wetlands and what, what is happening with that land now since it's not being developed? Is there anything you can tell me about that?
And what is your concern regarding it?
I guess my concern is, is it still part of the original project, so it's done and that's over, or can it be sold off as a separate piece of land and developed later in the future, and how does that work?
We have a comment coming right behind you.
Well, we have discussed this at an earlier stage of this process, and the applicant has indicated to be willing to put a conservation restriction or some other sort of restriction to make sure that that could never be developed again.
You're happy?
I'm happy.
That answered your question? That's the answer you opened for, how about that?
Because we, we still need to pursue...
You have to get closer.
We will be visiting the sewer commission and the Leavenstill Water Department and pursuing our upgrades in, in another avenue, and we just don't want to do it all for nothing and then find we're back in the same situation.
And that was one of the reasons for the change to this, you know, type of development and this layout was so that that portion of the, of the property wouldn't be used because we understood the concerns with regard to those streets.
So it'd be designated as conservation, you said?
It would, there'd be a conservation restriction placed upon it that would prevent any further development in perpetuity.
Okay.
And I presume it will be held by the Conservation Commission.
You're a very patient person, I would say. You're getting well-educated on the project for sure. Is there anybody else that on public discussion that would like to say anything? And here and none will close public discussion. Where are we at now?
Next year.
You need to continue the hearing.
I'm exhausted.
Continue.
I guess we're going to continue. I did write that down, I did make a note to myself. The best continued date, if I see, Lisa, I depend upon her for everything, July 23rd?
Yes, 7:00 PM.
7:00 PM.
I'll make a motion to that effect.
Okay. And that was the target date to close the hearing.
Thank you.
I think we may need one more reluctantly unless someone else has any thoughts on the matter. I don't think that, I don't think that we're prepared unless, and I give, Gary, you got any thoughts on the matter?
I would like to go 60 days out, that way if I, give me time to get the traffic study in, give it to Mr. Hamway, get a lot of things answered, and hopefully we can do it one more meeting. Now, I think if I have the 60 days, the two engineers can put their heads together and come up with a plan that's resolved. Any issues that planning board has, we can review. If we're, come to agreement between the parties, we get that resolved. We can resolve a lot in the workshop in our own little setting and wait 60 days instead of wasting the board's time on another meeting, and then close it on, in 60 days as opposed to coming back twice.
Dick?
I have one question. On Dan's draft, when do we do that? Would that be 60 days out too?
No, I mean, I can provide the draft in 30.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Well, should we meet to review that?
I could, I could email it to everybody, and then you can start reviewing it.
Yeah.
It's up to you.
And once the hearing is closed, you have an additional 40 days to render your decision as well under the statute.
How many days did you say?
Forty.
Yeah, you just can't, once the hearing closes, you can't take any more evidence or testimony.
No new business.
Exactly. No new, no new, you can't hear from anybody else.
But you can still hold additional meetings in terms of deliberating on your decision.
But we don't have to close in August. If we feel there's more time needed, we can continue.
Of course.
Mr. Chairman, the only reason to hold it in 30 days is to review the details of the draft decision.
To what?
To review the, to review the draft decision.
Yeah.
Otherwise, I think you could do it in 60 days and also review the draft decision in 60 days. I just don't think it would, it would be ready to close on 60 days without going through the draft decision.
Yeah, I would agree with, my thought process is...
So if I understood what you said, Dick, that you think that we could review that draft decision and close in the same meeting?
Probably not. Probably review the draft decision, there may be some other miscellaneous information that you pick up.
So I guess the question in my mind still is a question is, should we meet in 30 days to review the draft decision in the 60 days that Gary has requested?
For the continuance.
Would the draft decision even be ready for a hearing within 30 days?
So, given what I'm hearing, I would, I would recommend that we meet in, in 30 days to review the draft decision and then meet again for the close of August. The month later.
And they're at the 27th.
Review the draft decision and as much other information as possible.
Right.
So that you've got everything cleaned up and only have a few open issues for...
Yeah, every time you meet...
Be here, we might as well cover as much as we can.
Well, that could be a fairly short meeting. Review the draft decision.
Promise?
Yeah.
Not in my experience.
I don't think so.
We do such a...
Well, that's what I'm saying.
Dan does such a wonderful job. I've ruled the last one a couple of times, so...
He's had trouble sleeping.
So, okay, it seems, it seems like I'm sensing, send to the board, we meet again in 30 days to review the draft decision to put our minds all in focus like an arrow.
But continue this meeting.
Pardon?
But then continue this meeting as such.
Now, the applicant's participation in that meeting.
We'll be here.
I would guess you'd want to be here.
Absolutely.
Okay, but you could not come and we could just...
No, i- if there's going to be a hearing, we would presume, we prefer to get as much done as possible during the hearing.
I prefer it to be around 60 days. It's summertime, but I guess...
Well, you know, I was thinking the same thing, but...
We're all in the same boat.
My thought process was that if we try to jam that all into the meeting in 60 days, we could be here till midnight by the time we go through. And I don't think that we want to short any of the discussion that we might have in reviewing that draft. So that's my concern.
I do think the, the discussion probably shouldn't take as long as it did last time because you're going to see a lot of it borrowed from the original decision.
I always think of go through the draft fairly...
I don't know about as quickly as you think it might go, Mr. Chairman, but perhaps more quickly than it did last time when we had the original decision.
I mean, do we have to close in August?
No.
So why not, why not do as much as we can in August? If they're going to, if they want 60 days, let's give them the 60 days. I mean, it's July, guys.
Holy cow, the summer's gone.
Right.
Yeah, well, did I get in the shells of the ground this year, so... So I guess we will see.
Okay, what is the wish of the board?
Well, how are we on timing with, with the 180 days? We just on grace period here, or what?
Well, I think we took the position that the 180-day period restarted when we opened this portion of the hearing on the rental side, so, and I don't think we're that, we're what, 60 days into that?
I'm sure you'd give us an extension.
Of course. If there's additional...
I'm saying though, if they objected to what David was suggesting, we need to be making sure that we're not...
We don't object to that.
Okay.
We do, we just want to make sure we're getting as much done as we can in any particular hearing night.
Amen.
One of the advantages, I think, to stretching it out to 60 days is that it'll give us more time. I draft the decision, Paul's going to have probably some comments on it, I can consider his comments, so that there will be more time perhaps to allow that back and forth so that when you get it, you're going to see my draft with his red lines in it, and so we can maybe be a little bit more productive.
You feed it to him and then he'll redline it out, and then when we get there, we're more in focus to the issue.
And it would probably also allow for resolution to some of these other outstanding items.
So what is this? We're working to the 60-day issue?
Yeah, I'll make a motion, Mr. Chairman, we continue this hearing for 60 days.
So we had, do we have a date for...
Whatever date that is, Lisa.
August 27th.
August 27th.
It'll be August 27th.
7:00 PM?
Am I right, Lisa?
Yes.
At 7:00 o'clock. And the homework will be done by creating the draft, communicating the draft with the applicant. The applicant will redline the, that we will have it as individuals well before the 60 days so that we can individually, not collectively sniff on it and see what we like.
Right.
So that when we have the meeting on August 27th, everybody will be raising shop on the issue. We will have resolved the discrepancy with the sewer department and come to some conclusion, I would assume.
That's hopeful.
We will have resolved the 6 to 8-inch water pipeline.
That will...
That issue will be done.
Right.
And the road thickness, it seemed like everybody got all, was all of a sudden pretty happy with, with being configured. I think I heard, I sensed, you're not quite happy yet.
I didn't, I didn't voice my...